6:30, I want to welcome everybody to our March 2021 Commission meeting. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Mauricio, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner Viscaro.
Here.
Commissioner Llama.
Here.
Commissioner Goldman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Satchin.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
We have a call in present, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we can even virtually, we're going to rise for the pledge here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Chris, do we have an indicator tonight?
Yes, we do, ma'am. We have Rabbi Baron. One second, I'll bring him right up.
Oh, great. Rabbi Baron.
I had him here, I lost him. Whenever you're ready, Rabbi.
Okay.
Just unmute yourself.
Unmute? Is my camera on?
Yep. Now we hear you, but your camera's not on. So if you turn your camera on, we'll be able to see you.
If I get in, someone could instruct me how to do that.
Bottom left of your screen.
I'll send you over.
There you go.
Got it. We got it.
Look at that smile.
Good evening. Are we ready?
We're ready, Rabbi. Thank you.
Okay, great. Dear God, master of the universe, we stand humbled before you this evening as we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us. We're mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with a wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and guiding spirit, which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 23 years. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes as you, dear God, empowered humanity with seven basic universal laws after the great flood of Noah. These laws were once again reaffirmed by Moses at Mount Sinai to be taught to all of humanity. Universal laws that provide a framework of law, order, and justice, which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to perform this sacred duty. Almighty God, please provide us with the consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence so that we are consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, sensitivity, and the patience necessary to succeed so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women, serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. Please guide our city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future. And may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. Almighty God, these times, we do not take our health and safety for granted. May everyone gathered here tonight and all of the residents of Sunny Isles Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity. And let us say amen.
Amen.
Amen. Wisdom, patience, and what was the third one? And wisdom?
Intuition.
And wisdom, patience, all in short supply, I can tell you. So, thank you. Thank you, Rabbi. All in short supply.
You should not be self-deprecating, ma'am, mayor.
Well, thank you, Rabbi. Thank you very much.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of confidence in you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Rabbi, be well.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. We will move on to the approval of the minutes of the prior meeting. Do I, do I hear a motion? I hear a motion by Vice Mayor Satchin. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Lama. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye, great. Did he oppose? Motion carries. Okay, let me read my opening statement here in order of business. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for joining us tonight. Please ensure that your microphone is muted to avoid interrupting the proceedings tonight. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to use the raise hand function, which can be located by following these steps. If you're using an iPad, tap the center of your screen, tap on the three dots located at the top right-hand corner, select raise hand. If you're using a desktop, click on participants at the bottom of your screen. This opens a side window listing all the participants. On the participant screen, click on the three dots located on the bottom left-hand corner and select raise hand. If you've called in and you're listening on your phone, dial star nine to raise your hand and the city clerk will call on you based on the last four digits of your phone number. When called upon, please state your name and address for the record. Speakers may also use the chat function to submit their comments and questions. These chats are only available to the commission and the host or chair will read it into the record. The chat function is located at the bottom of the screen. Please make sure to type in your name and address for the record. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you exceed the three-minute allotment, the chair will advise you to finish your comment. If you don't adhere to the chair's advice, your microphone will be shut off. After item 7A, the commission will recess and convene at the local planning agency for approval of the LPA resolution relating to the 10-year water supply. The LPA will adjourn and the commission will reconvene. There's one change to tonight's agenda, and that's an add-on item, item 12B for discussion regarding red light cameras. I ask for motion to approve this change to the agenda.
Some moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye? Aye, thank you. Okay. We go. Um, item 5A is a presentation by Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, and I believe we've got our new, um, our new fire chief. He may not be so new, I just might not have talked to him in a year, given that, given where we've been for the past year, so. Chief, is Chief Kaminsky here?
Yes, ma'am, the chief.
There he is. All right, chief.
There I am. Good evening. Uh, thank you for allowing me this time to give an update in regards to Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. Mayor Skoll, Vice Mayor Satchin, council members Lama, Goldman, and Viscaro, and city manager Russo. My name's Alan Kaminsky. I'm the fire chief from Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. I've been a 26-year veteran of the fire service, certified firefighter, paramedic, as well as inspector. Last position as a fire, before I got promoted to fire chief, I was the assistant chief, technical and support services, as well as the fire marshal for Miami-Dade County. Are you guys able to see the PowerPoint?
No, we can see you, but we're not seeing the PowerPoint. Mauricio? Let's see if we can get it up.
Maria should have the ability to share the screen.
Yes, I'm trying to share it. Thank you.
Okay, one moment, chief, and we'll see if we can get, um. There we go. It's coming on now. And, um, yeah, if you want to enable the presentation, Maria, so it's full screen, that'd be great. That's it. Yep, you got it. Just say from the beginning. That's it. Just click on from beginning. And then it'll be full screen. That's it. There we go. Well, it should be doing that. That's what mine does. So, okay. Chief, chief, go ahead and get going, but I think, I think we got it.
Okay, well, do. So this is our Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Under Service Delivery 2020 for the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Department overview. We originated in 1935, largest fire rescue department in the southeast United States, among the top 10 largest in the nation. We're actually the sixth largest. Currently, we have 2,700 employees, a little over 2,100 firefighters, and 595 civilian staff. Currently, we have 154 frontline units, 59 ALS transport units, and 60 suppression units. We have 71 fire rescue stations, two full-time air rescue helicopters, two full-time fireboats. We are accredited by the Center for Public Safety Commission on Fire Accreditation International, as well as Insurance Services Office. Our ISO rating is a two slash two X. Some of our department service highlights. EMS, our emergency medical services. 90% of our MDFR unit staff to provide advanced life support services. MDC residents have the highest survival rates in the national from blocked coronary artery disease, or MI as we would say. We've part of establishing the STEMI, which is the ST elevation myocardial infarction network. We've been part of that network for over 10 years, which a huge benefit for all the residents of Miami-Dade County. We're also part of the countywide stroke network. Also within Miami-Dade Fire Rescue Department is the Office of Emergency Management, OEM, manages the county's emergency operations center, coordinates emergency response and recovery plans, as well as they're accredited through the EMAP, which is the Emergency Management Accreditation Program. Last year, we hired over four classes, welcomed 106 new firefighters to Miami-Dade Fire Rescue. Some of our 2020 highlights, we placed six new units into service. Engine 68, which is in Doral North, Rescue 71, which is out of Cutler Ridge. We did place two new foam trucks in service at MIA, Foam 1 and Foam 3, as well as two new fireboats. Foam 21, which is out of Hollover, and Fireboat 73, which is out of the Port of Miami, which will be having a Christian event for that vessel next week. Another highlight, we opened one new fire rescue station, temporary station, Westward Lake Fire Rescue Station 41, located at Ford 911, Southwest 117th Avenue. MDFRs have the privilege to serve the city of Sunny Isles Beach since 1997. In 2020, MDFR responded to 3,125 emergency calls for the city. 91% of the primary responses into the city were provided by two of our main stations. Station 10, which is in Sunny Isles, responded to 2,501 calls, which is 80%. And Station 21 out of Hollover responded to 353 calls, which equated to 11% of the call volume. Uh, we have 11 fire rescue stations within the city limits, 4.19 miles, I should say, outside the city. Station 10, which is within the city, we have rescue one ALS engine. Station 78 out of Eastern Shores has one rescue. Station 21 out of Holliver, which is 1.32 miles away, has one rescue, one 100-foot platform truck, as well as a battalion chief, and the 50-foot fireboat responds out of there. We do have a total of 21 frontline units serving the city. Two battalion chiefs, nine rescues, nine suppressions, and one fireboat. Daily, there are 70 firefighter, paramedic, EMTs providing service. Uh, this is just an overview map showing those different stations and their close proximity within the city of Sunny Isles Beach. 2020 incidents and response times. Of the 3,125 total incidents, 1,245 were life-threatening. Average response time was 6 minutes and 44 seconds. Non-life-threatening was 642. Average response time, 7 minutes and 16 seconds. For structure fires, we had 38, with an average response time of 5 minutes and 17 seconds. For life-threatening emergencies, countywide average is 7 minutes and 59 seconds. And within the city, it's 6 minutes and 44 seconds. For structure fires, our countywide average is 6 minutes and 22 seconds. And within the city of Sunny Isles Beach, it was 5 minutes and 17 seconds. For 2021, we've had 586 total incidents since February 28th, 2021. Life-threatening incidents, 197. Non-life-threatening, 147. A structure fire, zero. So hopefully, we can keep that this year. Other fires, 115. And other emergencies, 127. Next slide. In 2020 customer feedback survey, we sent out 20% of MDFR EMS patients. Countywide, 3,136 respondents, which is 10% return. Our overall score of 4.86. 23 city residents returned surveys yielded an overall score of 4.87, with a 97% satisfaction. One comment from a city resident. Thanks for your immediate and professional help. We felt confident that we were in the best hands. Blessings to all of you. And that's what means the most when we see responses back like that. So this concludes the presentation. Thank you, and open any questions.
Thank you, chief. Um, great stats. Great stats. Um, you know, we're, we were happy to see in the last couple of years our new fire station get completed. And it's staffed, and of course, you know, having the proximity to Hollover is icing on the cake, because clearly, you know, you've got a regional hub in Hollover and, and you know, and the fireboat as well, because, you know, I loathe the day one of these high rises has a problem. But, um, you know, we had it, I think it was about six years ago, Chris, when we, when we had the issue, you know, you know, with the building on the beach, and it was, um, you guys came out in force. So, um, you know, we certainly were, you know, you know, you know, we're happy that we had the Miami-Dade Fire Rescue, you know, backing us up. So, um, any questions from anyone on the commission? Okay. Chief, thank you very much for the time, and thank you for the presentation. And we look forward to, you know, continuing a great relationship.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Take care. Good to see you all. Thank you, Maria. Okay, we're going to move on to item 5B, which is Phase 1 of our city rebranding effort. Okay, there they are. Y'all, y'all look like branding experts, you know? So.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate being here.
Okay, Kathy, you want to kick it off?
Hold on, Kathy, you're muted.
There we go. Thank you, mayor. Good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, and commissioners. Back in 2019, we kicked off our rebranding project, which was a two-faced approach aimed at developing a new and unified identity for our city. This project is the first of its kind for our city's history, and the goal at hand here was to carefully create a brand with the involvement of our community that would embody what the city is and continue to inspire our vision for the future. Our rebranding firm, Jacober Creative, has been hard at work over the past year to truly understand our community and our vision for our future here in Sunny Isles Beach. And although the pandemic created some additional challenges and delays, we were able to deploy various research strategies to gain a better understanding from all of our stakeholders, so whether it be our residents, business owners, and our visitors within the city. And tonight's presentation is a recap of our research findings and analysis for our brand development. And joining me tonight from Jacober Creative is Luisa Jimenez, Director of Brand, of Marketing and Brand Strategy, and Paul Jacober, Creative Director. So without further ado, I'm going to turn over the presentation to them.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, we are delighted to be here, and I am just going to set up my screen real quick so that we can share our presentation with you. There we go. All right. Hopefully, can everyone see our screen, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Fantastic. So without further ado, we want to just kind of jump right into it. As Kathy mentioned, you know, we, we started this project about a little over a year ago. What you're going to see today is sort of the research report and our analysis of Phase 1 of the branding and communications project that we have here. And really what that sort of first, sort of our initial scope, is really to get the data and the insight from all the different stakeholders within the city, both internally and externally. So that being said, you know, we really wanted to embark on a really comprehensive data and fact-finding effort. The first part of it was to really embark upon focus groups to really unearth some larger trends and feelings, emotions about the city, and then further sort of clarify that within a quantitative scope. And we really like to start out with this, this statement, which we really, which came from the city itself, and we really felt sort of perfectly encapsulated what our goal was, which is to create a unified and identifiable look that residents can connect with, businesses want to work with, and employees are proud to represent. And we really took that to heart within all of the initiatives that we've been embarking on recently. But to further really expand on that statement, adjectives also branched out into the following, which was to create a unified brand identity that reflects the evolution of the city and its future growth, to connect the local government with the community it serves, to inspire resident engagement with the city, both in person and online, to attract potential businesses and investors to the area, and of course, to position the city of Sunny Isles Beach as a safe, responsive, and sought-after community. Now, as I mentioned, the first part of this was to embark upon focus groups. So to give you guys an idea, we did three different focus groups last year. This is pre-pandemic. So our first focus group was the city employee group, had 12 participants. The second group was our business group, and that had 11 participants, six of which were also residents. And then our last focus group was a residence group. Now, the quantity, the next part of it, after the focus groups, were the quantitative surveys. So the quantitative portion was conducted among 941 total participants. 631 surveys were completed online, and then 310 were telephone surveys that we proactively reached out to. Total of this 941 sample, we have a margin of error of about 3.2%, which represents a 95% level of confidence within this population. And the dates that this survey was fielded, both online and by phone, was from September 15th to December 1st of 2020. And then the, the survey was also, it was hosted on the website, but it's also promoted via social media and email from the city side as well.
So one of the most rewarding parts of this entire exercise has really been hearing from all the people who live and work here in Sunny Isles Beach, and more importantly, what they had to say. And overall, employees, businesses, and residents have a strong, have strong and warm feelings for the city where they live and/or work. None of the three segments could really play back a clear image of the city of Sunny Isles Beach. There was some recollection of previous attempts, like the Florida's Riviera or the city of Sun and Sea, but none were universal. And when probed, most believed that the city seal, the municipal seal, was the actual city's logo. And so while discussion on the logo was brief, those who expressed an opinion wanted something that more unified the east and west. And as far as a sort of a high-level takeaway, we derived from these, from these surveys and focus groups, these descriptors, that the city of Sunny Isles Beach is exclusive, luxurious, diverse, family-oriented, modern, and old-town. And coming into this project, there were numerous concerns expressed about the perceived divide between the residents on the west and the east sides of Collins Avenue. And we were well aware of the differences between the two sides in the beachside community. And these concerns resurfaced during the focus group phase of the research. But something that we really took away and thought was very unique, that was a very unique take on it, came specifically from a resident, and was specifically about a flow between the two sides. And where he really enthusiastically and sincerely spoke about the sense of flow between the city, and that ultimately, nobody misses out. And the way that he put it was that really residents get, some of the residents get the sunrise in the morning on the east, and other residents get the sunset in the evening on the west. And it was a refreshing and very neighborly way, way to address it and look at it. And really, the four main pillars that stood out from these surveys and focus groups were these four here of the landscape, where access to the beach and intercoastal, the people, family-oriented, community-friendly and welcoming, diverse and multicultural. The quality of life. A safety was, was, was a word that came up time and time again. And then the location, where it's conveniently located near major highways with easy access to both the Miami-Dade and Broward County airports and entertainment venues. And really, the characteristics of the city, sort of the ones that stood out the most, that residents and businesses really agreed, that really personify the city of Sunny Isles Beach, were these adjectives. Feminine, colorful, luxury, fun, and casual. And we know that sometimes, like, casual and luxury may be pitted against each other, but they actually, in fact, can very, very, very well live together harmoniously. And some additional topics that surfaced were the expectations and concerns about the future of the city. The expectations from employees, businesses, and residents really all expect that the city will continue to be culturally diverse and will become more of an artistic community over time. And the concerns from all three segments, particularly residents, is overdevelopment, more crowding, and less affordability for all but the wealthy.
And a note on this as well, is, you know, that these are, you know, things and themes that we see that aren't specific or only endemic to the city of Sunny Isles Beach, but are really sort of indicative of, you know, South Florida in general. So you can see some of the same concerns surface in Miami Beach, in Miami downtown, and some of the more populated areas of our region. Which also points us to some of the weaknesses, you know? Again, the point of really embarking on these focus groups is to really probe deeper in a casual way, you know, some of the concerns, the expectations, the delights of our focus group. And so we pointed out some of the weaknesses here, which, you know, kind of kept on surfacing. The first being traffic congestion, and of course overcrowding, those concerns of everyone. The lack of afternoon sunshine, more pedestrian walkways, lack of evening entertainment, a monopoly over commercial real estate and opportunities, short of a part of parking, which is kind of universal as well, and, and some cultural misconceptions that have sort of persisted the city from its inception. Additionally, in addition to these three focus groups that were conducted, we also collected questionnaires from elected officials and members of the Public Arts Advisory Committee that really sort of piggybacked on some of the concerns that were voiced and some of the questions that were asked within our focus groups. And really, what we wanted to do there was just get deeper insight into some of the viewpoints from these different factions of the city. And we kind of compiled them all, you'll see on this graph on the left-hand side, into the city hall, residents, and businesses. And really, what you see here is that there's not much of a stark differentiation between the viewpoints and the findings that we see along these three different groups, which is refreshing. As part of also our sort of logo communication wishlist, elected officials also said that, you know, they wanted to reflect the city of Sunny Isles Beach as a family-friendly community, as diverse, modern, cosmopolitan, beachfront city, where residents and visitors can enjoy city-organized activities and entertainment, and that it be a premier location between Miami and Fort Lauderdale, that it be portrayed as bright, beautiful, serene, and inclusive. The next portion, so that's sort of just wrapped up our focus group findings. Our quantitative research, which was really our phone and online surveys. So as I mentioned before, we had 941 participants. And a little bit of a note on language, we offered the survey in three different languages. 85% chose to answer the survey in English, 12% in Spanish, and 3% responded in Russian. And we'll explore, you know, the implications of language and household language a little bit later on in this presentation as well. But so to begin with, we really wanted to understand the respondent's relationship to the city. And overwhelmingly, we saw that 75% lived in the city. About 10% both live and work in the city. A further 7% work in the city but don't live there. 7.8% were visitors. Next, we wanted to ask some demographic questions to understand sort of the respondent profile, and also use these sort of demographic factors to be able to further segment our data down the road. In terms of age, we saw that sort of our respondents sort of tended to skew on the older side. The majority of the respondents were 35 years or older. And like I mentioned before, all the respondents were given the option to take the survey in three languages. When asked about what the primary language spoken in their home, only 58% said that the primary language spoken in their home was English, compared to 22% Spanish and almost 12% Russian. That was followed closely by Portuguese and French at 3.5 and 2%, but really, the, all of the other languages beyond the top three totaled about 7% in total. Furthermore, we were really interested in the household size of respondents. The overwhelming majority, 93%, almost 94%, indicated that their houses, households consisted of four or less people, with the biggest slice really belonging to two-person households at 44%. We also saw that when we segmented our information further, that residents living in the city less than 10 years tended to have larger families than their sort of longer-tenured neighbors. The next question really had to do with household income, and here's where we sort of present a little bit of a grain of salt, because as a general rule of thumb, respondents usually try to, or tend to inflate their, their household income. But in this response, you know, a full 22% of respondents actually declined to give income information. So in that sense, you know, we do give it a little bit of a grain of salt. But that being said, you know, the biggest bracket of our income here was at 200K and over for household income, followed closely by the 100 to 149K, and then the 50 to 75, or 74, 99. The next couple of questions, we wanted to segment our resident profile a little bit more to understand really what their sort of behaviors were. For the resident profile, we wanted to understand also what their residency tenure in the city was, if it was seasonal or if it was full-time. 81% almost said that they lived there year-round. About 19% said they lived there part of the year. And as Paul mentioned earlier, really early in the discovery process with internal stakeholders, there were several mentions and concerns about the perceived divide between residents on the east and west side of Collins Avenue. And these concerns really, you know, like you mentioned, also resurfaced during our focus groups. So we wanted to sort of explore that a little bit further within the quantitative, quantitative phase of our research, and be able to sort of segment as well, you know, how the east and the west sides of, of the city responded to certain questions. The majority of our respondents, in terms of duration, were actually newer residents, with the most popular bracket being the one-to-five-year bracket that you see here. So the majority of the residents of this response, of this survey, indicated that they lived here between one and 14 years. So we also, as our next question, we also wanted to understand sort of the colloquial terminology when referencing the city. About 90% of respondents referred to it as either Sunny Isles Beach or Sunny Isles. And overall, we found that people that work in the city are most likely to refer to it by its official name, the city of Sunny Isles Beach. Now, this is important for us as we sort of delve further into our communication and branding of the city to sort of better reinforce or appeal, or really surface if we have to sort of pivot the common sort of usage of, of the city's name. These next couple of questions were concerning word associations. And really, what this aims to do is help carve out the city's brand persona as it's currently perceived. For the positive word associations, the clear winners across the board were beauty, safety, walkability, and family. And we, when we break this down into resident and non-resident profiles as well, we know we see that, you know, if you would like to look at the heat map, so to speak, on the left-hand side, you have the residents, and you know, the sort of clear indicator of variation there is in response to diversity. So residents tended to view the city as less diverse than non-residents do. But conversely, sort of had greater emphasis on community than non-residents. So you can see that community even beat out walkability for the residents here. And now, personality association, the clear winners were attractive, family-oriented, and friendly. So this continues sort of a strong preference for aesthetics and family that we saw surface in the previous question. For our emotional associations, we saw that the respondents really placed security and comfort, really almost kind of neck and neck, you know, that those were very important, followed by calmness, and to lesser extent, satisfaction. And one of the things that sort of jumped out to us here, as we further segmented the data, also by resident and non-resident, were how residents and non-residents ranked and perceived pride and joy differently. So along the sort of terms of pride that you see here, on the left-hand side, residents really had lower levels of pride than non-residents. You see that compared from 3% to 7%. And conversely, had higher levels of joy than non-residents. So you see that here at 12% versus 8%. So this is, you know, something that sort of surfaced to us, and is certainly a metric that we'd want to improve upon within our communication and branding strategies. When we further segmented this by, like the residency, we wanted to sort of see how the same metrics developed over time. And so we see that, you know, initially, within sort of, I want to call it the honeymoon phase of being a recent resident to the city, you have very, very high levels of joy, but 0% pride. But those levels of pride slowly increase the longer you're a resident there, which really speaks beautifully to how the community serves its residents over not just a short, but a long period of time. And then also, I guess you could also make the same parallels to sort of honeymoon feelings. Your feelings of joy also kind of diminish over time. But again, these are metrics that we can sort of, sort of further gauge and work to improve upon. And the next question were in terms of city characteristics. And these are things that, you know, we initially started probing on within our focus groups, and we wanted to really quantify them as, in a, in a larger setting, in a larger perspective. And really, the characteristics, excuse me, characteristics that were more pronounced were colorful, modern, luxury, and approachable. And so although, so for, for example, like say, like luxury, approachable, and casual may seem like they don't coexist, and there are obviously very many instances where they can and certainly do. And it's, I think it's certainly a testament that the city can rank favorably on all three of those. Now, the next question happened to be on the city colors. So what kind of colors do you associate more with the city? There's also, you know, sort of a Pandora's Box of color psychology that you can sort of delve into there. Refrain from that Freud, Freudian analysis here. But really, the overwhelming majority chose blue. And an interesting fact here also, respondents were given the option to sort of write in their colors, if they didn't see that, the basic ones that, that were appropriate for them. And what we really saw in the write-ins were different hues or tones of blue. So turquoise, sky blue, or teal were common entries that we also found within our write-ins. That was interesting to see. Our next question really covered communication channels. And sort of like globally, we saw that among the social media channels, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and YouTube, Facebook was sort of the social media source of choice. When we segmented this by age, Facebook was more popular among younger, younger segments and older. While Instagram is also used by the younger segments. But surprisingly, YouTube was the most popular for those over 50. So that's sort of where YouTube got its boost from. Email and newsletter are also popular ways of getting information from the city. And then the one that sort of scores lowest was radio. And that was sort of true for all segments when we further divided up that data. But sort of one note on this, this is not a measure or indication of how effective these communication channels are, because they each have a purpose and they each have, you know, their sort of own sort of strengths that can be used for different audiences. And then our last question was really gauging how survey respondents were likely to recommend the city as a place to live or work, to family or friends. And I mean, you can see from the data here overwhelmingly, you know, you see this, this green bar on the bottom, you know, 40%, 45% scored a 10, which is a great indicator of people's just satisfaction with the city. The average response was an 8.38, which is also fantastic.
Yeah, I just want to add, that's actually a very, very strong rating, and from what, based on our experience, also very unique.
Especially within municipalities. So as I mentioned, about 45% recorded a perfect 10. And conversely, only 4% of respondents really recorded a 3 or under. And then as I mentioned, you know, that, that the significance there is that overall, you know, we have a very happy and satisfied population. Now, the aim of this question was really to further segment this into a net promoter score to really be able to gauge, you know, how well people feel about, about the city. So we segmented this into detractors, passives, and promoters, where detractors are obviously the people that, you know, are a liability to your brand. Passives are sort of neutral, they're okay, but they're not going to, you know, rail either for or against. And then, of course, the promoters, you know, those that score 9 to 10 are really loyal enthusiasts, and really make up, as you can see here, the majority of your, of your rankings. So in order to get to that net promoter score, we subtract the detractors from the promoters, and we get a net promoter score of 42. Now, 42 is on a scale of negative 100 to 100. So where anything sort of negative is really cause for concern, 0 is sort of neutral, and 42 is, is a great score. When we sort of further index the net promoter score across these, you know, different segmentations and different categories of respondents, we see that, you know, by far and away, residents have a higher opinion of the city than non-residents. When indexed, that's 162 versus 95. And I think that that 162 is the highest scoring, the highest scoring segment of all of our different segments here that we'll speak about. Our primary English speakers have a lower opinion of, when indexed compared to other languages. So Spanish speakers index at 138, and Russian speakers at 133. Positive opinion increases with age, so that younger respondents had a lower opinion around 82 in index than older, which index around 103. And then visitors and people who work but do not live in the city have the lowest opinion at about an index of 65. But the, those who index higher were really those that lived and worked in the city at 128. And then lastly, the people that live in the city year-round have a higher index of net promoter score at 111 than those who live here part-time at 84. And so you can see when we further sort of segment this by household income, again with a grain of salt, 22% decided not to give us their household income. We see that the lower income brackets really index above average. We have 139, 133, and then peaking at 163. And the net promoter score kind of descends a little bit after that, but then comes right back up at the 200K top income bracket. Likewise, by sort of length of residency, that honeymoon phase of a year when you first get to the city of Sunny Isles Beach, you're really happy, ready to tell all of your friends, come, live and work here, your net promoter score is indexed at 151. Then it falls to 109, still above average, and 106, and it sort of falls to 92 at the 10 to 14, but then levels off after that. So again, a good testament to sort of how the city serves its long-term residents. So.
Thank you, Louisa. If I could interject just for a quick moment. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, as we move on to this next part of the presentation, this next section, we're really looking for your consensus as we move into Phase Two of this project. So up until this point, the research that we've discussed is going to fuel our brand positioning and strategy moving forward. So we really, that brand positioning and strategy is going to be the foundation for our brand to moving forward. And it's going to lay out everything that we do in Phase Two in terms of the brand design and all of the elements that will go along with it. So your input is truly vital during this section of the presentation. So if you want to interject at any point, provide feedback on any of the positioning and the different targets and focuses where this project is going, feel free to do so at any momentum.
Kathy, I, I think it might be good to have a workshop on that for the feedback. Because, you know, I think that, I mean, it's a commission meeting, you have a limited amount of time. And I, I hate to kind of make people feel rushed to kind of give their opinion. And there's a lot of information here, you know. I mean, we all looked at it, but there's a lot of information, and I think it's good information. I actually, I'm very pleased with a lot of it. But I do think that maybe, I think we can go through the brand positioning, but I think instead of trying to draw conclusions tonight, we might be better off having a workshop. You know, it can be a Zoom workshop, but have a workshop, and then, and then we can take the topic on specifically. Would that be all right?
Yes, that would work. I just want to make a note that it's, we're just gonna have to work out the, the timelines again.
Yeah, no, I understand, but I think, I, I think it's just difficult. I think, again, this is a commission meeting, and we're kind of, and this is a strategic positioning, you know, discussion. And probably not the right place, in my opinion. But, you know, if others feel different, and others want to go for it tonight, it's up to, you know, it's up to the commission. But, but I, but I would suggest a workshop to kind of, to kind of move it forward. And we can do it in the next, in the next couple of weeks. I'm not, it's not something I'm saying you put off two months, so, but, okay.
I'd like to say I agree, I agree with that completely. I think there was an excellent report, and it's very, it's very thoughtful and impactful. But I think that we really should reserve that for a future workshop. And, and won't immediately, we can do that, but I, I completely agree with that analysis.
Understood. So if this time is all right, I'd like to turn it back to Louisa and just kind of go through that brand positioning.
Great. Yeah, so for our brand positioning, having gathered all of our data and all our insights from the focus groups, from our quantitative surveys, from general markets research that we've done as well, you know, we wanted to sort of further hone the next steps that we were, that we're going to be taking within the next phase of our communication and branding strategy. So that being guided by our overall brand positioning. And then this is sort of like a high-level look at how we want to position the city, especially as it relates to other neighboring communities in the area. So one of the things that we want to do is really touch upon the city assets. And, you know, you guys are very familiar with what assets you have, but we'll sort of list them here. You have world-renowned architecture, a diverse multicultural population, strong and expanding amenities for residents and visitors, valuable real estate, and from what we've seen, an existing brand needing refinement for its growing reputation. And our areas of focus within sort of brand positioning is to raise the city's profile as an upmarket and sophisticated place to live, own a business, and visit. At the same time, continuing to emphasize the city as a casual and family-friendly place, expanding the promotion of its beach, pier, and recreational amenities, emphasizing the city of Sunny Isles Beach is a perfect location for accessibility as it relates to Miami and Fort Lauderdale, positioning the city as a more tranquil and navigable, navigable alternative to Miami Beach, as more sophisticated and diverse than Broward County, and as more centrally located than similar high-end mixed-single-family and high-rise coastal cities, for example, like Key Biscayne. And then lastly, we also want to take advantage of the recent uptick in buyers relocating from high-tax states such as New York and California. And really, overall, the city of Sunny Isles Beach has a unique opportunity to leverage a strong standing with existing residents into a winning-place branding strategy that strengthens its broader appeal to future residents, businesses, and by extension, visitors. And so when we take a look at the brand positioning, we frame it within the following sort of context. Our primary market is current and potential residents. Our secondary target is investors, businesses, and visitors. Our secondary target is investors, businesses, and visitors. And of course, in terms of the category, it's an oceanfront community in Miami-Dade County. And the benefits that we want to extol are beautiful beach, safe surroundings, family-friendly parks and recreation opportunities, progressive urban planning, and world-class architecture. And so, as evidenced in the qualitative portion of this research, you know, residents express express high levels of satisfaction with the responsiveness of their local government. So that's why we're going to be introducing, in terms of, you know, differentiators for the city, you know, in addition to beauty, quality, and value, customer service as an additional factor and one that's really going to resonate with the potential new residents and businesses. And then the main message of our brand positioning is that the City of Sunny Isles Beach is a South Florida oceanfront community that offers the pillars of a quality upscale lifestyle for all citizens, a beautiful landscape, a safe and family-friendly environment, culturally-rich municipal amenities, and a progressive urban vision. And then, for sort of further indicators for our next phase and next steps, we're going to be embarking on sort of two campaigns, from an internal and external perspective. From an internal perspective, as we saw previously, we want to increase civic pride among residents and business owners. And then, parallel to that, would be a campaign to to increase the initiative among employees of the city. You know, we really feel strongly that great brands start from within, and city employees are sort of the best personification of the city brand. From an external perspective, we want to embark upon campaigns aimed at visitors, prospective businesses, and future residents of the city. And we're going to be focusing on these key elements. Our positive words, which were beauty, safety, and walkability, and of course, the strong number four, which is family-oriented, which sort of segues into community. Really, the City of Sunny Isles Beach is a beautiful, walkable, elevated community that is great for the entire family, and it's also bolstered by the reputation of the school and the plethora of recreational opportunities that's served by the local government, and the personality traits of security, comfort, and calmness. And so, that being said, we have four priorities for our next phase, which is the branding and communication strategy. We have a campaign to increase pride among current residents, a campaign to attract new residents, a campaign to attract new businesses, and a visitor campaign. Thank you very much.
Great information. I think I think the size of the sample sets, the size of the focus groups and the others, I think it brings a it lends a lot of credibility to what you're presenting, because I think you've got a really good number of folks involved, and I think you got a lot of feedback. I like the fact that you got feedback from, you know, you know, diverse diverse group of residents in terms of cultural, you know, you know, you know, the cultural stratification of of our residents. And so I think it's great. I think it's a lot to digest. That's why I suggested, Kathy, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but that's why I'm suggesting the workshop. I, for one, wouldn't want to make a judgment call today, I can tell you. I think I think, you know, Commissioner Goldman agrees, and I'm sure the other commissioners were shaking their heads a little bit, but but I think the work is excellent. So believe me, sometimes we sit through these things and we're like, nah, you know, not that, that's okay, but not great. But I do think the work is excellent. I think it's well organized, and I think you're laying out some very compelling options for us, which is really, you know, which is really the goal of the exercise. So I promise, Kathy, we will get something on the books in the next two weeks, okay? And so we'll so we'll keep the timeline moving, but I think it'll give everybody an opportunity to digest it and the public. I'm sure we're gonna have folks from the community that want to comment on this and wouldn't necessarily get the same level of ability to to interject their opinion in a commission meeting. So so that's great. Thank you very much. Any other comments from the commission before we move on?
I just wanted to make a quick comment there. I I got the benefit of sitting through the entire presentation, and it was, you know, about an hour, and so I feel differently, but that's because I sat through it and was able to ask a lot of questions. So I at first I wanted to move forward, but now I see that it probably makes sense to have a workshop. I agree with you.
No, it's a great presentation. I mean, I really enjoyed the information. I think it was laid out very well.
Very well structured.
Like the mayor said, you know, how you got into the different backgrounds in our city and also on how you divided up, you know, whether there were recent residents or the longevity of how long they've been here. So the information is very interesting. It does merit a workshop, so we could delve more into it and have more of a, let's say, well-thought-out. I don't know. I would like to be able to really study the information more, so I can make a more, let's say, informed conclusion or next step action plan. But yeah, this is great. Round of applause for the information, yeah.
Appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, I forget how to do that virtual clap. I don't I don't see that on here. Is that on Zoom? Yeah, yeah. So, yeah. Okay. With that, okay, thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate it, and we will get and we'll get something teed up quickly, I promise. Okay? Thanks, Kathy. All right, great work. Great work, everybody.
Good night.
Oh, we have a hand up. Who's got a hand up?
It's Jody, but this isn't really a discussion item or comments, but if you want, we can...
Okay, sure. No, Jody, if Jody's got something to add, let's let's hear it. Jody?
Jody, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Mauricio, it's Ashley Jerry Joseph.
Jerry, sorry about that.
Five sixty North Bay Road, Sunny Isles Beach. And I was just curious as to who requisitioned this whole thing, the rebranding and all.
Chris?
That went through a competitive bid process.
Okay.
Okay.
Was there, was there someone that brought up the fact that we might need a rebranding?
Yeah, I think it's been brought up several times, actually, because it's getting tired. It's been twenty years, it's been twenty-plus years. I think, I know, I brought it up, I I brought it up once or twice, you know? I actually used to like Life with a View. I didn't like Florida's Riviera that much. So, but I brought it up a few times. I think other commissioners have brought it up from time to time. I've heard it from the public many times, so, you know, so we went out to a competitive bid process, and here we are.
And it came up during the cultural arts study at the PAC Committee.
But was, I mean, I've lived here for twelve years. Was Florida's Riviera ever, you know, pushed as as a brand? I don't, you know, I mean, we saw the sign, you know, the seal, but never pushed.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know, Jerry. I I haven't paid a lot of attention to, you know, but but what we're really talking about is our, is just kind of our city identity and our, you know, and our branding locally. So I couldn't tell you, I'm sure we could go back and see when we've done, you know, events with the...
I thought Florida's Riviera was was not a bad logo.
Good. Okay. Well, then come to the workshop and advocate for it.
I might.
So you'll get a shot, you'll get a shot. That's the point of having a workshop, Jerry, you know, because I feel like with a workshop, at least we have an ability to, you know, to get folks' comments, so.
No, I absolutely thought that was a good way to go tonight.
Good. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Okay. Okay, let's move on. We go to item five C. And Alex, if you could mute, that would be great, because I think we got our sign. Thank you, that's okay. So let's go to item five C.
Okay, five C is being presented. I'm not sure if the city manager wanted to say a few words before I bring on George Duos.
All I want to say is George Duos and his company has is no stranger to the city. In the in the beginning of the city and the early years, we did two studies organizing the building department and coming up with our initial fee structure. George had done both those reports. He was involved with the the creation and the first building department and our staffing. And this was a good time the past year. The state had recently passed some changes. As you all may recall, the building department is operated by a separate building fund that has to abide by regulations of the state. Some of the requirements have changed that deal with how the funds are are categorized. We have been talking about upgrading our technology for a long time. We were also at the at the break where we wanted to analyze our staffing to see if we were still, you know, still covering everything that we needed to. And and George and Justin Shepherd from his staff conducted this study. We want to give you the the results of it, and and then we'll go forward from there. We simplified the the fee schedule, and I'll leave it to George for the next few minutes to to give you a run-through. Justin and/or George are gonna pop up somewhere here.
They're on, they just have their cameras off and they're muted. I just asked them to unmute themselves.
I saw Justin a minute ago. There's George, okay.
Sorry, my apologies. I'll bring up the presentation and good evening. Thank you, Mr. Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. So, as the manager said, my name is George Duos, and I have Justin Shepherd. We're with JR D and Associates, trying to go from the beginning here. And we've been working with the the manager and staff for the last six months in developing your new building permit fee structure. It seems to be a popular topic right now. In the last two years, we've, besides Sunny Isles, we've revised the fees for the cities of Coral Gables, the Village of Pinecrest, Key Biscayne, and last summer, actually, the U.S. Virgin Islands. So it's it's a time where a lot of municipal building departments are looking at at their fees. So trying to get this to play from the beginning, but...
I can share my screen if you're having...
It's okay, I got it. I got it there, so I apologize. So the objectives, we wanted to make sure that, we looked at a few things for the city. The first one was to assess your current building department staff versus your workloads, and and that's in the in the form of inspections and plan review. We also assessed your options for electronic plan review, which the city is going to, and provide recommendations on functionality and cost, as well as look at your, a new state law that that as of December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, was mandated by House Bill one twenty-seven, which is to create and post on the city's website a permit and inspection utilization report. And also, in develop, the the majority of the work that we did, which we're gonna focus on tonight, is develop a proposed building permit fee structure that achieves three objectives. Number one, ensure adequate cost recovery for the services provided by the building department. Number two is concise and easy to understand. And number three, creates a reserve for unseen factors. Can you see my presentation?
I just shared the screen. Can you guys see that?
Yes, it's up my mind.
Yes, I can see it.
Okay, so...
Yeah, we can see, we, yeah, yeah, we're seeing Justin's presentation. You couldn't see yours.
Okay, okay, so I apologize, that's why we always have...
I thought you were reading, yeah. Yeah, I didn't realize that you actually had a presentation. I thought, you know, I thought that you were reading your own.
Yeah, my apology, Mr. Mayor, we we always have a Plan B, so. And then, the other thing that we wanted to make sure that we accomplished was creating a reserve for unforeseen factors, and we're gonna get into all of these in a few minutes. And finally, to conduct a comparative analysis of a few sample permits from other municipalities and compare them to the City of Sunny Isles Beach. So the first thing we wanted to talk about is, again, we looked at your staffing, and we've done a lot of staffing studies in building departments throughout the county, and we did feel that your staffing is appropriate for the workload. There's only one recommendation right now. You have two part-time structural plans examiners. We recommend that, if possible, that you have a full-time structural plans examiner. There's economies of scale there, and most municipalities have at least one full-time structural plans examiner, and with the type of construction you have going on in the city, it's it's definitely warranted. Another area we looked at was your electronic plans, your moving to electronic plan review. This is a great move on the city's part. It allows for faster plan reviews and concurrency in plan reviews, so all of the trades can be reviewing plans at the same time. It's something that most building departments are going to now. City of Miami created their own. City of Miami Beach is implementing their electronic plan reviews, and the plan review system that you're going with Blue Beam Review Standard is actually being implemented by the City of Miami Gardens. So it's it's easy to use, it's it's very reasonably priced, it's compatible with Smart Gov, and again, it's it's used around the country. I mentioned that there's a state law effective December thirty-first, twenty-twenty, that every municipality must post their their permit utilization report on its website. So we worked with your building department staff and developed this this report. We've done a kind of scoured all of the municipal building departments in Miami-Dade County. Only about half of them have actually complied with posting the report, so it's good that at least you're you're complying with state law on this. And these numbers are as of the last completed audited financial year. Justin? All right, so we wanted to focus for a few minutes on your building permit fee structure. Again, we've done quite a few of these in the last few years, and we always want to follow the approach that we want to collect as much data as possible. So we looked at your last two completed fiscal years for permit activity and financial information. So we looked at FY two thousand nineteen and FY twenty-twenty. We wanted to make sure that we develop a concise and simple-to-understand fee structure that ensures cost recovery. So right now, your fee schedule is approximately thirty-seven pages for different types of building permits and those those fee codes. So we've gotten it down to a couple of pages, and we're gonna present to you how that's how that's gonna work, but simplification is one of the things that we certainly wanted to ensure that we we did for the city. We also wanted to project your FY twenty-twenty-one revenue based on proposed fee and anticipated permit activity. You know, we're restructuring your fees, so one of the things that we do is look at where certain types of fees and construction activity may fall to make sure that the cost recovery is achieved. And again, finally, as I mentioned previously, we conducted a comparative analysis of several permits from the city and compared them to other municipalities in Miami-Dade County. Just wanted to give you a quick overview of your construction activity over the last two completed fiscal years. I don't think it's a surprise to anybody on the day is that approximately, you know, ninety-six to ninety-seven percent of your activity is commercial. And so you see there, the the number of permits issued from the residential, which is the lightly shaded green, and commercial, which is the lightly shaded blue. Something that's important to point out, you had a ten percent decrease in permit activity from fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty. So there's been a slight downtick in activity, and we want to, we will address that later. So just to give you a breakdown of permit activity and job value range, one of the the metrics that we look at is what is the value of construction in in the City of Sunny Isles Beach. So you can see that approximately ninety ninety-two percent of, for fiscal year nineteen, ninety-two percent of the total number of permits are within fifty thousand dollars of construction value. So that's where a majority of your activity is occurring, and on the commercial side, it's ninety-seven percent of 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 your number of permits are fall within the hundred thousand dollar area of construction. Obviously, the the more expensive project, like the estate at Aquolina, is the is that four-hundred-million-dollar project that you had in... is that $400 million project that you had in 2019, which accounted for a great deal of permit revenue. But the activity with respect to number of permits falls predominantly within the $50,000 and $100,000 range for residential and commercial respectively. To give you a sense of 2020 activity, the percentages don't change much. Again, the majority of permit activity occurs within, for residential, within the $50,000 range and commercial within the $100,000 range. The $250 million project that you see there for FY 20 was the Armani Casa project. So looking, we wanted to make sure, we looked at your building department expenditures. So we took your FY 21 adopted budget and wanted to make sure that we looked at the full picture of what the expenditures are, because this is what the city needs to recoup within its building permit fee structure. So Justin, go ahead and go to the next one. So just to make a point on your personnel budget, per the budget, you see the dollar amount. But we made an adjustment, a slight adjustment, which we footnote there for the deputy city manager and another staff member, who are funded out of the building department, but conduct a small percentage of their work for other areas. So we wanted to back out those expenses, because the idea here is that permit fees will fully fund all of the personnel that's budgeted in the building department. The next thing that we wanted to talk about was the indirect cost allocation. This is something that we always do for our work when establishing building permit fees. And this is basically the costs associated with support for the building department from other city departments. So we interviewed all the city departments, from the city manager on down, and allocated a pro-rata share to building. That allocation may have been as a percent of square footage, if it was physical space, a percent of time spent supporting building operations, or in the case of human resources, a headcount. So there's different allocation methodologies. The past few years in your budget, you've had a consistent $850,000 transfer line for these costs. But we actually did a detailed interview and allocation process to come up with a more exact number. So it went from $850,000 to almost $1.25 million. Okay, so now our recommended, proposed building permit fee structure. One thing that I want to note, again, you currently have a 37-page fee schedule. The reason for that is because a lot of the fees are segregated by trade. You might have a number of outlets to be counted on an electrical permit, number of fixtures for plumbing. We wanted to, again, really simplify your permit fee schedule. So all of the fees that you see, and going forward, whenever you adopt this fee schedule, if you do, will be an all-inclusive fee. So whatever a permit applicant pays for their fees will be inclusive of plan review and inspections for all the trades. And that would include also roofing, windows and doors, and driveways, aside from the approach, which is a public works permit, as well as zoning plan review. So that makes the process very, very simple. It makes it very easy to calculate your fee and very transparent to your permit applicants. So you can see here, we've come up with a tiered residential fee and a tiered commercial fee. And if we go to the next slide, we'll show this in greater detail. So a couple of assumptions that we made here, or really our methodology, was that the 2021 projected revenue is based on FY 2020 permit activity. We went a little conservative on that, because as I mentioned, there was a 10% decrease in activity from 2019 to 2020. So we wanted to, we always try to go on the conservative route. And if activity bumps up, then that's a good thing. We don't want to go non-conservative. Your expenditures that are included in here are based on your FY 2021 adopted budget, with that small adjustment for those two personnel that perform some activity outside the building department. So if you look at the left-hand side, the proposed building permit fee structure on the residential, there's a minimum permit fee of $125. And that minimum would be applied to any permit that is within the job value range of $0 to $6,250. Then we have a tiered structure. Again, for residential, anything that falls between that $6,250 and $50,000, which as we saw was quite a bit of your residential permits, is feed at 2% of the job value or value of construction. Then from $50,000 to $100,000 is 1.5%. And any permit greater than $100,000 will be feed at 1%. So it's a tiered fee structure. On the commercial side, same approach, a little bit different on the numbers. We have a minimum permit fee of $150. It's a little bit higher, because commercial plan reviews and inspections are more complex and involve more of your staff time. And then you see the same tiers from tier one to tier three, from 2% to 1.5% to 1%. And then we created a tier four, which is for any project greater than $100 million, of which you have some every, every once in a while, maybe every year. So when we look on the right-hand side of the slide to the projected revenue, when we apply these tiers and these fees to the anticipated volume, again, we work very closely with your staff to get good, accurate counts of different types of permits within different types of, or different job value ranges. You see, when we apply all of these percentages to your permit activity, we would anticipate revenue of $5,125,000. When we apply that against the expenditures, that we showed you the expenditure budget, your expenditures should be at about $4.1 million. And that leaves approximately a 24% reserve or surplus of just over $1 million. And again, it's within state law that you can have reserves. We saw a 10% decrease in activity from 19 to 20. You have to always keep in mind that permits are issued and paid for upfront. So essentially, the customer is paying upfront for all the services you provide. So you, the permits are always lagging in services. So you will be doing plan review inspections maybe years after that fee is paid. So you have to provide the service, which means you have to have the staff to provide it. So we always like to include a surplus or a reserve for a rainy day. And 24% is a number that we discussed with the manager, that he was comfortable with. And, you know, it certainly provides a cushion should there be another 10% or even greater drop in permit activity. The next few slides are the comparative analysis. So Justin, if you can go back up one, please. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you want to field, you want me to field any questions right now or just finish? I just have a few slides on the comparatives.
Yeah, why don't you finish? And then I've got a couple of comments, go ahead.
Yes, sir, okay. So we wanted to compare our, the current fee to the proposed fee. So Justin, if you can go to the next slide. We looked at several municipalities. Again, these are municipalities that we're familiar with. They, some of them, or all of them have some parallels. They all have high-rise construction, Miami Beach, Key Biscayne, and City of Miami certainly have, you know, coastal construction to some degree. Obviously, the beach. So we felt these are fair comparisons. So we have four sample permits. These are actual permits issued by the city of Sunny Isles Beach. One thing I'll say about this, that I want to point out, is that these are, these are actual permits. So we're showing you the actual permit fee that was charged under current and what would be charged under proposed. So it's not going to be the case where, in every situation, for instance, commercial interior remodeling, that it would be such a significant drop. That's currently charged on a square foot basis. So we're going from square foot to value of construction, a tiered value of construction. So, you know, the higher the square footage, the greater the square footage on a permit, the more, the higher the difference is going to be between current and proposed. If that was a lower square footage on this exact permit, you know, you would see, you would see a smaller delta there between current and proposed. The same thing with new commercial construction. This was actual, actually, the, the fees paid on the Armani Casa project. Total value of $250 million with 1.7 million square foot, square feet of construction. So you could see, based on current to proposed, there would be an increase in the permit fee. Again, if this was a smaller project of, you know, perhaps $100 million, then that difference between current and proposed would be smaller. The, the green bar is the average of the comparable fees for the other four municipalities we surveyed, we benchmarked. So you can see that even currently, you are significantly less than the average of these other municipalities. The other two comparatives we want to make is, first one is a swimming pool. Again, there's quite a bit of swimming pool activity as far as construction in the city. So, and again, I want to point out that the proposed $1,040 would be a one fee, inclusive of all trades. Your $1,303 now is comprised of fees for different trades. Your subcontractors, again, we'll just use a swimming pool as an example, your plumbing and electrical subcontractors on a swimming pool would still be required to pull their permits. That's required by law. It's just that their fee would be zero. It would have been paid upfront by the prime contractor, the general contractor. And then the last one is commercial flooring, which again, is very prevalent in the city of Sunny Isles Beach. In this example, the permit was, the permit fee was $642. Based on our tiered fee structure, it would be $600 and right around the average of the other comparable municipalities. So you can see in a lot of cases, this is, this is a restructuring of your permit fee schedule and structure. It's a simplification. But again, it will ensure cost recovery. In some cases, compared to what your current fee is now, the fee might go up, in some cases, it might go down. But I will, at this time, take any questions you may have. That's the end of our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, George. So I think it's a thorough analysis. I've only got one comment. And that is, if you go back to your tier, to your residential versus commercial tiers, Justin, if you can get those up, that's it. I would argue that the minimum residential fee should be $25. And the reason why I say that is because most of our residents live in multifamily buildings. When they wing it, because they're trying to save money, it affects their neighbors and it can have a profound effect on the building. So I kind of, it's not a lot of revenue, but I kind of feel like we should make it as easy as possible for somebody to get a residential permit for a small job. You know, because if you think about it, the minimum fee is more than the cost of a ceiling fan. You know, and if they're putting in a ceiling fan, the fee ends up costing more than the fan. I don't know whether they've got, again, I'm not, I'm not an expert in permitting. But Chris, you know, what do you think of that? I just feel like we should just make it egregiously inexpensive to basically try to aid compliance.
Well, we actually had that discussion during the process. You're being, I think, maybe a little bit stronger on it. George, I know Clay's on. Can we take this back and discuss it, to bring that down? We did talk about that, you know? And in the past, these kind of fees, as much as I know exactly where you're going, and I did bring this up. But one of the things always was that, and the smallest item, somebody's just doing a single door, or a ceiling fan, or, you know, something very minor, just changing the toilet or something. You know, we always talked about that. And we always, you know, get back to, well, we just, we can make it just what our cost is for the inspection or something like that. But the bottom line is, I have no problem going back, unless George or Clay sees anything that, you know, we're missing, that's a real, you know, that's something.
Yeah. I think we should, I guess my point is. Yeah, my point is, I don't mind losing money on that one. Because it's helping compliance. Honestly, it's not a matter of recovering cost on that. And it's not like that's the bulk of our permits here.
Right.
And we've got a hefty, you know, you understand, George. Yeah, you see where I'm coming from.
Yes, sir. We'll take that back.
Yeah, I, you know, I completely understand. And we always say, you know, we, we want to ensure compliance with the code first. And we don't want to charge $500 for a permit for a $500 window or garage door. So we're very sensitive of that. What we try to achieve with the minimum fee is that any, any activity that, or any permit that, any activity that requires a permit is going to require, there's going to be a cost to it. So we try to really incorporate that. I think this is a policy decision on your part. I, you know, I personally like the idea of making it as little as possible. And if you look at the projected revenue under minimum fee for residential, that's not, this is not going to have a huge impact, because again, your reserves are over $1 million. So, you know, this might come down to $2,500 and it's certainly covered within your reserves. So just a policy decision on the city's part. It'll work financially with respect to what we're trying to achieve.
George, let's just check and make sure there's no state requirements or anything, you know, related to this.
Right, no, there aren't, but we'll confirm.
Okay.
Other comments from the Commission Vice Mayor? Do you have a comment?
Yeah, I agree with you, Mayor, especially in places like Winston Towers, where they have an insurance plan with Total, where they get most of their work done for free. And when you have to have something minor and all of a sudden you thought it was free, but you have some elderly person that has to pay this fee. I, I know from hearing stories that they try to get around it. So I agree with you 100%, that's a good policy decision.
Okay, Clay, I see your hand up.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Mayor, one thing that our current permit fee schedule makes allowances for, for what you were talking about. You know, if we have a permit that just got one item, like an air conditioner or a commode or a single item, we have that in our fees now that, instead of the minimum fee, you have, you only pay $25 for a single issue permit. I think that would help out if we maybe want to keep that, we could keep that in the, in our new ordinance possibly.
Yeah, I, I just think if somebody looks at the fee schedule and says, oh, it's only $25 for a permit fee, I might as well get a permit. Just because it's also, you know, because of the condos, a lot of times they do get busted because the, because, you know, because the condos self-police at some level. So I guess that's where I'm coming at it, Clay. I understand that there might be, that there might be a nuance. But I don't think it's, I think when somebody realizes that they have a cheap job, the permit fee's cheap and it's the end of it. You guys look at it, it's a presentation, I'm not trying to set policy here. But you guys have a look at it. And I think you, you know, you've heard from some of us, you know, how we feel about it. And I, I just feel, because we have so much multifamily, you just want people to comply. Because, you know, when they do their own electrical and it catches on fire, you know, the ramifications are much more than just your own home. You know, you've got, you know, you've got a lot of folks around you as well. So, okay. Any other comments from the Commission?
Yeah, I would have liked to have seen a comparable with, like a city like Aventura or some of the other, you know, neighboring cities. I don't know that, you know, we necessarily compare to Key Biscayne or City of Miami. I would hope, I would have hoped to have seen a little, a much more broader comparison point. I don't know if that's feasible or possible, or.
We, we can add, Commissioner, we can add Aventura to, to our analysis.
Surfside, Bay Harbor, you know, just to get a, a better sense of, you know, our, what they're doing. Because this is, you know, this is a change in our fee structure, so I'd like to see some more data.
Yeah, Surfside doesn't have high-rise development, but I, I would say, I would say, you know, they, they're 12 stories, but I would say, you know, but, but, but if they can add an Aventura, great.
Aventura would make the point.
The whole area. Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree. So, okay, any other comments from the commission?
I'd like to chime in here. I think, I think the, the $20, the $25 reduction is an excellent idea. But I would add, if, if we do go that route, that we make sure that we, that we inform our residents, because otherwise they'll just keep on assuming they can't afford it and then we didn't actually solve the problem. So we would have to follow it up with, with information.
Got it. Good idea. I think we could put it out on the website and maybe do something proactively. So, or maybe something, something in the newsletter, you know, you know, that reflects it. Okay, Alex, you, you want to, you want to mop it up or you're good?
No, I'm good. I, I had the same comments, Winston Towers and advertising the, the new fee structure and to residents, so they know that, you know, it's going to be easy and it's going to be cheaper too. You know, we do pass that. So that's it.
Great. Okay, Justin, George, thank you very much. Appreciate the work and look forward to you, you know, you'll mop it up with Clay and with Chris and hopefully we'll, we'll have a new fee structure before we know it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay, guys, thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, we move on to zoning. And we've got ordinances for first reading. First one is item 7A. Mauricio.
7A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending chapter 135 of the city's Code of Ordinances titled Construction Sites to amend section 135-2 to provide for maintenance standards previously contained in section 112-4D, adding requirements for owners and contractors in response to severe weather advisories, creating Article 3, Construction Fences, by creating a new section 135-6 to incorporate those provisions previously contained in section 265-63.3 and providing for additional regulations and standards. Amending section 112-4 of the city's Code of Ordinances, property maintenance to repeal sections, subsections C and D relating to vacant lot and construction site maintenance. Amending chapter 253 titled Vacant Lots to include those provisions previously contained in section 212-4C and providing for additional fencing standards, providing for amortization of non-conformities, repealing section 265-63.3 titled Construction Fencing, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date, and this is first reading.
Boy, that was easy, that was easy for you to say, Mauricio. Okay, Ed?
Actually, Mayor, I'm going to defer to Claudia because this is really her, her ordinance.
Okay, Claudia, where are you? There you are.
But even Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Mauricio, if you can help me out bringing those two pages up. I think those images are, are going to speak louder. Basically, the main goal of this ordinance beyond actually cleaning up some of the code sections that we have relating to construction fencing, vacant lot fencing, the severe weather and other items. The main goal was to actually achieve a better idea to maintain vacant lot fencings and construction sites. As you can see in the sample over here, this is our vision for a construction site. How will, should be maintained, how should look for a construction site. We are going to be adding a minimum standard manual into, into our references. So not only contractors, but for us, for our officers, it's easy and clear what they should be looking for. With a black coated jambalaya fence with a mesh that is tied it up to, to the construction of the fencing. Mauricio, can you go into the next image, please? And then differentiating between a construction site and a vacant lot. Vacant lots, actually, we wanted to make sure that we can see through the jambalaya fence, especially in residential areas, so we can observe that it's being maintained and it's clear of any debris or any other objects that they could be hiding, be behind a mesh. Also, a lot of the issues for maintenance, they were related to the mesh and they were completely not, not, not using, the mesh wasn't being for use in a vacant lot situation. So that is the main goal of this ordinance.
Okay, Mauricio, do we have any public comments on this?
Uh, yes, we did, Mayor. Give me one second, let me pull it up. Actually, I'm sorry, it wasn't for this one.
Okay, public hearings closed. Any comments from the commission? Vice Mayor, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, thank you, Claudia. This has been an issue in, in Golden Shores, especially with vacant lots being covered and not seeing what's happening inside. And, you know, kids or whomever breaking in there and doing whatnot. So this would be a great change for the neighborhood and really help to clean things up and make it look a lot more sleek, a lot nicer. So, thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I will take a motion.
They'll move.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Goldman, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Mauricio, voice vote?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading, second reading will be scheduled for April 15.
Excellent. Okay, we move on to ordinances for second reading. And that is item 9A is the first one.
9A is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending section 26-7 of the city's Code of Ordinances titled Supplemental Qualifying Period to provide that a candidate for office of mayor or city commissioners are qualified by complying with the requirements set forth in section 26-15. Amending section 26-9 titled Names of Qualified Candidates to be printed on ballot by adding the requirement that candidates submit a state government issued ID plus one type of residency documentation in order to qualify. Amending section 26-15 titled Qualifications, adding a requirement for candidates to provide a state issued identification plus one type of residency documentation and detailing the types of acceptable documentation to show the candidate met the requisite residency requirement, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
Okay, Ed?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. This was up for first reading in January and what we're doing is amending the code to require an additional type of documentation so that candidates for mayor or commissioner can actually show that they've been a resident of the city and the district in which they're running for the past year. And it sets forth what those specific pieces of identification are.
Okay, Mauricio, do we have any public comments on this one?
No, Mayor.
Okay, any comments from the commission? We, we beat it up pretty good last time. Okay, Commissioner Viscara?
I, I just want to emphasize like how, how incredibly important it is that we, that we did this. I think it strengthens our process. I, I think it was Vice Mayor Satchin who brought it up initially and I, and I think it's, it's fantastic. And Ed, I really did my best to, to try and find and punch some holes in it, but I, but I couldn't, I couldn't manage. So I hope, I hope I'm right there and, and I think as a city, we're going to be better for it here. Thank you so much.
You went through the legal gauntlet, Ed. They put, she put you through the legal gauntlet. That's it.
This isn't a bar exam.
See that, we got lawyers on the commission, that's what happens. Keep your toes. Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments?
I have one quick comment. Just, I, again, I appreciate this, Ed and Mauricio. This really maintains the integrity of our elections, especially everything that we hear happening in the news. So it's great timing, it, it was about time and so, you know, thank you for all the work on this. And Commissioner Viscara for your additional work checking it. Thank you.
Okay, hearing other comments, I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Okay, moved by the Vice Mayor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lama. Okay, Mauricio, voice vote?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Okay, we're getting some work done. Item 9B.
Okay, this is the long one. Okay, 9B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending chapters 1496, 99, 116, 129, 138, 170, 189, 194, 208, 215, 223, 231, 234, 253, 260, and 267 of the city Code of Ordinances to provide for departmental name changes to conform to department names set forth in chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances. Amending chapters 33, 158, 166, and 170 of the Code of Ordinances to replace the term special master with the term special magistrate to be consistent with chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances. Amending chapters 121, 193, 212, 247, and 256 of the Code of Ordinances, of the, of the Code of Ordinances to provide for departmental name changes and replacement of the term special master with special magistrate to conform to and be consistent with chapters 14 and 22 of the Code of Ordinances. Amending chapters 85, 125, 135 of the Code of Ordinances to clarify that enforcement will be pursuant to chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances. Amending chapters 108 to 17 and 220 to provide for departmental name changes to conform with chapter 22 of the Code of Ordinances and to clarify that enforcement will be pursuant to chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances. Amending chapter 197 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for departmental name changes and replacement of the term special master with special magistrate to conform to and be consistent with chapters 14 and 22 of the Code of Ordinances. And also eliminating the term directive management information systems. Amending chapter 265 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for departmental name changes and replacement of the term special master with special magistrate to conform to and be consistent with chapters 14 and 22 of the Code of Ordinances and to clarify that enforcement will be pursuant to chapter 14 of the Code of Ordinances. Providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date, and this is second and final reading.
All right, Ed, that was another mouthful.
My, my explanation won't take as long as the reading will. What we're basically doing here is amending various provisions throughout the code in, in order to implement the name change that you had previously approved for Claudia's department and also to replace the term special master with the special magistrate. It's more cleanup than it is anything that's substantive.
Excellent. Mauricio, any comments from the public on item 9B?
No, Mayor, none.
Okay, any comments from the commission on the cleanup? Hearing none, I'll take a motion.
I'll move.
Motion by Commissioner Goldman, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Lama, voice vote?
It's a roll call, Mayor. Commissioner Goldman?
I'm sorry, roll call.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes, thank you.
The ordinance is adopted.
Okay, great, we move on to item 9C.
9C is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, extending the term of ordinance number 219-541 for an additional six months from March 19, 2020, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for an effective date. Second and final reading.
Ed?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this is extending the moratorium on Town Center North for an additional six months due to COVID and the fact that, that we still have that pending administrative proceeding in front of the division of administrative hearings.
Thank you, Ed. Mauricio, any comments from the public on 9C?
None.
None. Comments from the commission on second reading? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Lama, second by the Vice Mayor. Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Okay, we go on to item 9D.
9D is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, creating chapter blank of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach entitled Polystyrene Products, providing for legislative intent, providing for definitions, providing for the prohibition on carrying expanded polystyrene food service articles by individuals and temporary vendors onto city property or city facilities. Providing for the prohibition on the use and carrying of expanded polystyrene food service articles by city contractors and special event permittees operating on city property or city facilities. Providing for penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Second and final reading as well.
Okay, Ed?
Thank you, Mayor. After the discussion that we had at first reading, we went back and made some amendments to the ordinance that you previously saw to make it clear that we were, we were talking about were food service articles so that there weren't any unintended consequences with the use or carrying of other polystyrene products. And also clarified the definition of a public, a public city facilities so that, so that Commissioner Viscara wouldn't get arrested for bringing anything onto city property.
Okay, so, so, so we're keeping Commissioner Viscara out of jail. That's a good thing. Mauricio, do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do, Mayor. One comment, this one comes from Maria Ramirez. Her address is 18390 Collins Avenue. Her comment is, can the city consider expanding the prohibition on the use and carrying of polystyrene food service to sidewalk cafes on public right of way? In addition, can the city strengthen its litter laws by prohibiting the use of plastic straws to all commercial establishments within the city limits? As well as prohibiting plastic bags from being distributed by sidewalk cafes, marinas, and other public places? The City of Miami Beach proposed a styrofoam prohibition including cafes back in 2014. Furthermore, the City of Miami Beach banned the use of plastic straws and use of plastic bags back in 2019. I hope the City of Sunny Isles joins the City of Miami Beach in being a leader and steward of the environment by becoming a plastic-free city and following the necessary measures to protect the environment. To note, polystyrene is a common pollutant which fragments into smaller non-biodegradable pieces that are ingested by marine life and other wildlife, thus harming or killing them. And due to the physical properties of expanded polystyrene, the EPA states that such materials can cause, can also have serious impacts on human health, wildlife, the aquatic environment, and the economy.
Okay, well, I think we already did straws if I'm not mistaken. So, but, but in any case, I, I also got a fair amount of comments through the website or through the, you know, the right to the mayor. And so, so obviously, you know, this is an item that's resonated, especially with certain, with certain, with certain groups. So, and any other comments from the commission? Ed, go ahead.
I, I just wanted to respond. We, we don't have any authority to regulate what your local businesses do. We're specifically preempted by Florida statute from doing that. So what, what we can do is what occurs on city property and that's, that's what we're trying to do by this ordinance.
Got it. So, any other comments from the commission for second reading?
Yeah, if, if, of course, the state preemption is lifted, obviously we'll have more latitude to explain. have more latitude to explore different areas of, of, uh, possible, um, policy, but, um, in the current environment, that, that, that preemption issue exists, but, uh, clearly I support this and advocate this, and it's part of our e-committed strategy and our overall, uh, environmental, um, consciousness, and, uh, I think it's the right step and the right direction and the right time to, to implement this, so, um, all in favor, I'm all in on this one.
Anyone else? Commissioner Viscara?
I'm, I'm much happier with, with this version, I, last month, we had, it was just way too broad, and as you mentioned, right, like, my point was, I don't want to buy a carton of eggs from my lumps, walk on a city sidewalk, and be in violation. I'm in favor of staying out of jail for buying eggs and walking and walking home. Uh, so I, I think that shrinking it to something that's manageable, that's workable, that's enforceable, uh, that needs to be a focus, uh, in, in, in what we do. Uh, and I, and I appreciate the, the efforts, and I'm, I'm much happier with, with, with the outcome.
Great, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I, uh, I agree with Commissioner Viscara, and I also want to commend the city manager because we've already seen changes in, at, uh, the government center, things have already, prior to this even being, uh, uh, second reading, so I appreciate that. And, uh, to the, uh, the person that, that made the comment, I, I agree wholeheartedly, and I think that we are, uh, going in that direction where we are leaders, uh, like Miami Beach, and we are doing things, and, you know, as you'll see some other things that we're talking about, uh, and I appreciate the public commenting and sending the emails, because they are very, very helpful. So I, I support this, obviously.
Okay. Commissioner Lama, last but not least.
I agree with everybody else. I, I'm all in, too.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, no arguments here. I appreciate the cleanup.
Before, before we take the, uh, the vote, um, even though the public portion, the public comment portion is, or the public hearing, I'm sorry, has already closed, there is someone that raised their hand, do you want them to speak? Okay.
Let him speak.
Uh, Jerry or Jody, go ahead, your name and address for the record, please.
560 North Bay Road. Ziden Golden Shores. Uh, just what Ed was just saying about how we have no control over what the, um, restaurants do, I know we have a problem with, uh, the pollution on the beaches. I just have a suggestion, um, maybe did we ever think about letting the, um, lifeguards issue tickets? I mean, they are our water heroes. You know, if they could do that, because I see, you know, people throwing things on the beach, and it's really bad, we do have a problem, so maybe if we're issuing tickets, people will be a little more respectful of our beaches. Just a thought.
Thanks, thank you, Jody, thanks, um, yeah, I mean, that is a thought, so, um...
I mean, I don't, I'm not, don't want to take time away from their, you know, watching, but they're smart guys, they've been trained for years, so they know when they can write a ticket, they have to be watching the waters, but I think, you know, it'll be a big help, just in cleaning up in the right direction, thanks.
Got it, thank you, Jody. Okay, Mauricio, any other public comments?
None, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I'll take a motion, I think Commissioner Goldman was, uh, hot out of the gate, okay, and then, um, do I hear a second? Second by the Vice Mayor? And it's an ordinance, Mauricio.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Okay, we made it through the ordinances, and we are on to resolutions. And our first resolution of the evening is item 10A.
10A is a resolution awarding request for proposal number 20-12012 and approving an agreement with the amusement source LLC for event ride rental. And I will bring up Sylvia right now.
Is that Sylvia?
Yes, Sylvia's coming up.
Ah, there she is.
Good evening. Year in commission. Um, so this item, we went out to bid for our event ride rentals, these are our attractions and the activities and the entertainers that we use for the various events that we do throughout the year. Um, amusement source was, um, the only, um, response that we received, however, uh, we've worked with them for many years, have been very satisfied with their services and their work, and the quality and quantity of equipment that they're available to provide. Um, so this item is entering into an initial term of two years with them, with an estimate for the amount, the not to exceed amount, um, and obviously, that's with the caveat, right now, we have not been utilizing, um, event attractions, um, for any of our activities, but we want to get this moving and have this in place for when we are ready to expand those activities at the events.
None, Mayor.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve.
I have a hard time hearing the mayor.
Okay, is that better? No?
A little bit, okay. I think we can manage.
Okay, how's that, is that better?
Yeah, mhm.
Okay, there we go. Um, okay, I've got a motion by the Vice Mayor, do I hear a second?
Second. Okay, 10B is a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the agreement with the City of Hialeah to provide maintenance, repair, and storage services for the city's shuttle buses, vehicles, and equipment.
Uh, Honorable Mayor and Commission, um, back in 2016, we entered into an inter-local agreement with the City of Hialeah, uh, to provide maintenance services for our shuttle bus service, um, based on the fact that we have received funding through the county as well as the federal government, there are requirements that we have to meet as far as, um, drug, um, employee, um, drug screening and the maintenance of the records and all of those items, um, City of Hialeah already does this with their, um, fleet, and so they are the, um, most responsive to be able to meet these needs for us as well. Um, and so this request is to, uh, re-enter into that agreement. Um, we're requesting for 29 months so that we can coincide with the fiscal year, and then if we choose to continue to use their services, then we, um, we need that agreement at the beginning of the fiscal year and request the funds for that fiscal year.
Okay, any comments from the public on 10A, Commissioner?
Yes, Mayor, we have, uh, Jody and Jerry, one second. Go ahead, Jerry, Jody.
Just to say that we can't, um, hear Bud, his, um, his volume has gone off.
Oh, really? Okay. Is that better?
No, not better.
We can hear you, but it is faint, you sound far away.
It's, maybe your microphone...
Oh, now we totally can't hear you.
That's even worse. Zero.
They can't see us, and our, our sound is off. Mauricio, okay.
No, Mayor.
No? No.
Can you, um, can we maybe try to see if maybe it's a setting on, on your Zoom?
Okay, I'm gonna, I'll just put a call back in, let's just hold on a second.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, you can hear me now?
On the phone, yes.
Okay, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna really go for it and put my headphones back on, so hold on a second. Sorry, because, because they will... Okay, is that all right? Does that work?
Yes.
Okay, good, okay, very good. Yeah, for some reason, my, maybe it's my Bluetooth connection went a little crazy. Okay, thank you, Jerry. So, um, okay, at item 10B, do we have any other speakers, Mauricio?
None, Mayor.
None. Do I have any comments from the commission? No. Do I hear a motion to approve? So move for the Vice Mayor, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Lama, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Sylvia, item 10C.
10C is a resolution authorizing the chief of police in accordance with the Comprehensive Crime Control Act of 1984 to expend partial forfeiture funds from the Department of Justice for design, engineering, and permitting services to be performed by Magellan Advisors for the build-out of the fiber optic network and for the purchase of eight Pro Laser Speed detectors. And I will bring up the chief right now.
Can you hear me?
We hear you.
Okay, perfect. Uh, good evening, and, uh, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Again, this is, um, a request to expend, uh, partial forfeiture funds to pay for our portion of the design, engineering, and permit services performed by Magellan Advisors for the build-out of the fiber optic network and for the purchase of eight Pro Laser Speed detectors for traffic enforcement in an amount not to exceed $39,339.
Excellent. Um, Mauricio, any comments on item 10C?
None, Mayor.
Okay, any comments from the commission? Nothing's better than those, um, speed detectors in a fiber network, I can tell you, you know, keep it moving.
Yeah, I can't wait for that.
I'll tell you, so, yeah. Exactly, exactly.
With, with the game.
Yep, yep, so Commissioner Viscara, would you like to make a motion?
So moved.
So, okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Chief, go by him and get him installed. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, item 10D.
10D is a resolution ratifying First Amendment to the agreements with Disaster Program and Operations, Inc., entitled Basin Government Consulting LLC, to provide for the disaster debris monitoring services. Mayor, we can combine this one and 10E as well, they're related items.
Great. Okay, so we're gonna combine 10B and E, and, um, do you want to read off E as well?
Yeah, 10E is a resolution ratifying a First Amendment to the agreements with DRC Emergency Services LLC and Crowded Golf Joint Venture to provide disaster debris removal services. And I'll bring up Evelyn right now.
Great.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. Um, tonight I present to you the ratification of the contracts for the primary and secondary contractors for disaster debris monitoring services and disaster debris, um, disposal services for your approval.
Great, thank you, Evelyn. Mauricio, do we have any comments on 10D or 10E?
None, Mayor.
No public comments, do we have any questions from the commission? We always need our debris removed in a disaster, so, um, with that, I'll take a motion for approval?
So move.
Okay, by Commissioner Goldman, do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Lama, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item 10F.
Okay, 10F is a resolution expressing support for Senate Bill 334 and House Bill 239, which would allow local governments to regulate smoking in parks and on beaches. And, I'm sorry, Mayor, just really quick for the record, uh, there was a typo on the resolution where it listed the House Bill as 229 instead of 239. So, just to confirm, the House Bill number is 239.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we supported this last year, uh, Senator Rutter's tried to get this through the legislature, and it, it didn't get to that, to the floor. This goes back to, uh, what we've been talking about in the past, which is pollution on our beaches. Uh, very few people realize that cigarette butts are actually made out of, the filter is made out of plastic, not cotton, and whether we at one point decide to not allow it on our beaches or our parks, ultimately, this is the back home rule in letting us decide. So this is supporting their, uh, Senate Bill and House Bill, uh, to allow us to have our home rule and decide whether we want smoking in our parks, uh, and on our beaches, and I, I'm in huge support of this, I was last year, and I really hope we come to a, this year, I think it's about time.
They're always, they're always taking what they can, so, away from us. Um, okay, any comments from the public on 10F, Mauricio?
None, Mayor.
Okay, any other comments from the commission? Okay, I'll take a motion, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Viscara, sorry.
I was going to say, anything that, that threatens home rule, we have to, we have to push back on, cigarettes or whatever, we have to push back.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to keep it coming, um, some, some of the, some of the proposed legislation this year is the same thing, just like, you know, just tearing rights away from us, as if, you know, I, I just don't understand the logic at times, but...
You know, I, something in one of the, uh, seminars, um, I haven't verified it, but they said that most of the legislators have, are not, don't actually come from local government. So they don't, they really, they don't understand what, what, what it's like to be us, right? They're, they're thinking on a different... Uh, and I don't know if that's true, a speaker said that, but it definitely makes sense.
Nor do they have to adhere to the sunshine law, because they made it not apply to themselves. So, that's the other piece of it. So, in any case, okay, I'll take a motion to approve, Vice Mayor? Okay, I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Viscara, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Thank you, okay, item 10G.
10G is a resolution directing the city manager to pursue the SIB pedestrian safety recommendations, which include a detailed and comprehensive policy of active policing across the city resulting in increased traffic enforcement in hotspot locations at or near crosswalks within the city. Directing the city manager to request that the Florida Department of Transportation and Miami-Dade County analyze proposed changes to speed limits and crosswalk designs or features for the respective roads.
Okay, um, Commissioner Goldman?
Okay, so, um, this is a, uh, distillation of, uh, the, the comments and the, uh, community engagement that occurred on, um, uh, March 7th, that a, at a, at a rally, I'd like to shout out and acknowledge the, the efforts and the, uh, outpouring of, uh, concern and advocacy on behalf of Sunny Isles Beach Insider and the Sunny Isles Beach Moms Groups, uh, that really, uh, you know, went to the front of the line to say, hey, this is the most important thing that we can do is protect the safety of our residents, we all know what the genesis of this is, it's the tragedy of, uh, that occurred with Anthony Resnick, but it really brings to the surface all of the, uh, accumulated concerns and, you know, unhappiness with our pedestrian and, and bicycle safety and the issues that have come to the fore. So, while some of these items are, uh, currently in motion, uh, already, including, of course, the, uh, police departments, um, you know, uh, putting together of this, of... including of course the, uh, police departments, um, you know, uh, putting together of this, of a comprehensive program, certainly this was a way to really put down into paper those concerns and the voice of our residents to say, "These are the things that really matter and that we can really, uh, implement to really, uh, you know, absolutely, you know, further the interests of the city and of course, uh, for public safety and for our residents." So, I think it's pretty self-evident what it states. I'd like to also acknowledge Anastasia Panaflova, who really, uh, put these items together, got, uh, arousing, uh, applause at the rally. Um, I think these are common sense, uh, approaches to, uh, some of the challenges that we face in our city and just really, really want to, uh, again, you know, be at the fore of advocacy for these very, very important, uh, uh, mitigation items for the city, for the benefit of our city.
Um, Mauricio, any public comment on 10G?
Yes, we do, Mayor, we have quite a few. Give me one second, we'll start. Okay, the first one is from Claudia Lombardo, address is 17014 Collins Avenue. Her comment is, "To whom it may concern, Sunny Isles is a beautiful city full of kids walking around. Why must we be in danger? Why do we have to live with cars constantly racing? Why are there always young kids dangerously doing donuts in the My Lumps parking lot? Why must pedestrians cross Collins and 172nd, have to stop and look for traffic coming from 172nd turning left? Drivers doing a left always try to intimidate pedestrians crossing here and sometimes they don't see us cross the street." Uh, the next one is from Irina Millyukova, address is 22180th Street. Her comment is, "I would like to draw your attention to the pedestrian crossing over Collins Avenue and in the area of 189th Street. Drivers do not, never stop at a flashing light, but deliberately speed up completely ignoring pedestrians. I never drove the cops there to enforce the stopping rule. An additional problem is introduced by an information board installed in front of the entrance to the overpass and the covering the view of the crossing signal." Next one comes from Alecia, address is 16400 Collins Avenue. Her comment is, "I approve all the initiatives proposed by Dana and asked the city to do a bike lane study." Next one is Natalie W., 25180th Drive. "For such a densely populated community with families and kids, our streets are not equipped to keep us safe. There is a significant issue with speeding cars, cars running red lights, and an extreme lack in consistent police enforcement. Pedestrians need more time to cross the street and flashing lights. Our main street cannot have six lanes. We have to have a designated bike lane that does not allow any vehicles by using barriers. As a resident that has lived here for only two years, I've never witnessed so many crashes and fatalities in such a short period of time, especially coming from New York City." The next one is from Tamara Kiljapa, 150 Sunny Isles Boulevard. "I approve all initiatives proposed by Dana and ask the city to do a bike lane study." This one is Anastasia Panfilova, address is 16485 Collins Avenue. "I agree with all proposed initiative, initiatives and ask you to do a bike lane study as well." Pavel Stoev, 17145 North Bay Road. "As a full-time resident of, I'm sorry, as a full-time Sunny Isles Beach resident, I completely support this resolution. Please approve this resolution with your vote. We must do everything and anything possible to prevent another injury or death of a pedestrian or a bicyclist in our city." Vitlana Achorskana, I'm so sorry if I mispronounced the last name, 2841 Northeast 163rd Street. "A serious and fast action should be taken about the crosswalk at 163rd Street where a child was killed crossing the street on green light. This street, this street light and not, and crosswalk is not marked for better visibility till today. The police sign is covered by the 35 mile sign and both cover visibility of crosswalk sign. This is not acceptable. Speeding is a huge issue at that place. FDOT should resolve the issue immediately after the tragedy happened. Put speed bumps, stripes on all lanes, on all lines going down from the bridge on 163rd Street to slow down responsible drivers. Act fast, please." Dean Burry, 16445 Collins Avenue. "The city blames cars for pedestrian and bike problem. The problem is not cars, but the pedestrian and bikes refusing to follow the laws. I have seen hundreds of pedestrians climb through bushes and the islands in the middle of Collins. Hot fences perched on their toes about to fall into traffic because they are too lazy to use a crosswalk. We all see it every day by the dozens. We never see the police arresting or ticketing the pedestrians. Daily I see the bike riders run red lights, never seen one ticketed. Pedestrians and bikes are huge safety hazards to cars. The focus is backwards." And that is it for this item as far as public speaker cards. We do have a few people that have raised their hand as well. Um, one second, Mayor. Uh, Ms. Uran, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Anna Uran, 17105 North Bay Road, uh, B209. Thank you, goodnight to the Vice Mayor and the Rural Commissioners. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, like I said before in our last meeting, that, uh, for me, the biggest problem is the personal responsibility, so, uh, people, uh, like to point, uh, who is, uh, the guilty, but I feel, I walk the streets only, I don't drive. And when I walk the streets, I see our neighbors rushing to get out of the Winston Towers, rushing to cross that Collins, to drive, so I'm thinking, uh, whatever the police is doing is a wonderful job. Toodles to the Chief and the staff, thank you so much for the, those bombs on the 172nd Street. They were wonderful and for everything that you are doing to make this better. But until we don't stop putting the eyes and the fingers on others and taking responsibility every time we back up, when we don't look, when the pedestrians are crossing, when we cross that red line, then we have an issue. I think our city is wonderful, but anybody that came here and wanted to, uh, buy a property, uh, knew that. Knew what they were buying, so we just have to understand where we live in, uh, according to. We have to be careful on the streets and be careful with, with one another. Because I don't see how you can put a policeman in each car to make people, uh, drive better. How many polices, how many things you can do? We are, uh, a big, big, uh, can, uh, you know, a can of sardines. I'm saying it one more time. There's a lot of people in a very tiny place, so we just have to understand that and get into the reality that, uh, we cannot do much. This is the middle between South Beach and Fort Lauderdale, what do we do? Uh, thank you, that's all I have to say, cuz I hear this complaining and I don't think it's fair, all these dramas that they put in the commission, all these, uh, finger pointing. I think we need to also think about what we do. How we put that seatbelt in our children, how we open the doors looking around is a whole, uh, education. And I wanna remind, at some point last, uh, commission, one of you talked about maybe educating, maybe bringing some lessons for pedestrians and people, something that we can also re-educate our community. Cuz, uh, it's, it's gonna be very hard to control everyone. You can put a policeman in every single corner and it's still gonna happen if we don't are aware of, uh, where we are. Thank you, and God bless you.
Okay, uh, the next one is... Uh, Maria Quinn. Your name and address for the record, please.
Um, hi, my name is Maria Quinn. I live at 17150 North Bay Road in Portobello Gio, Sunny Isles Beach. Uh, thank you for the opportunity. And, um, I know Commissioner Goldman, I've been speaking to Commissioner Goldman for years about, uh, bicycle safety. Um, good evening, uh, Commissioner Goldman. And, uh, I was at the event, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and I've been on my bicycle for 12 years. I've been living here for 12 years. I know Mr. Russo, he lives in Portobello Gio here. Um, I moved here from New York City. Um, I still live in New York City. I'm a city bike rider in New York City. Uh, we don't own a car. I moved here because I didn't have to own a car. I moved here 12 years ago to a seaside community and it's become a metropolis. Um, it's kind of hard for me to see what's happened here, cuz I wanted it to stay a seaside community, to become a metropolis, but I'm safer riding my bicycle in New York City than I am here in Sunny Isles Beach. The reason is because I have protected bike lanes in New York City. Mayor Bloomberg put in protected bike lanes. You see them in downtown Miami Beach, there's a zebra lane. It doesn't cost a lot of money, but it did cost a life here. You lost a life here, February, I think 10th, a young boy lost his life. Because he was not protected, because this community became a metropolis. So, what I say to you is, talk to the state and protect us on our bicycles. People that don't have cars here, that wanna use a six-lane highway called Collins Avenue. We wanna reduce the traffic coming through this very beautiful seaside community and make it a nicer place to live, lower the emissions, make it more environmentally friendly as we develop more climate change for our future and our children. Make it more protected, so if you add a protected bike lane, you then protect your seniors on the sidewalk as well. So it's a double protected barrier. And I don't agree with the woman that says there's nothing you can do. Because you can do something simply. You could take a portion of Collins Avenue and make it a protected bike lane and then protect the sidewalk pedestrians and your children that are using that sidewalk. It's so simple, and I'm really very angry about this every day. I pay taxes and I wanna be safe here in this community I've lived in for 12 years, and I don't feel safe riding my bike or walking my dog. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. So, thank you very much.
Okay, the next, um, and I did just wanna make a brief comment. There was a Carlos Baptista that had his hand raised. I think I might have accidentally lowered his hand, so if he doesn't wanna speak, just please raise your hand again. Um, the next one is Jody or Jerry. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jody Joseph, 18560 North Bay Road. I just wanted to say that it was quite interesting, exactly a week ago, um, last Thursday. It was quite interesting, I was coming home and I was getting ready to make a left, I hate to say the word, down Deeser Street. I still have to call it Golden Shores Way, we're hoping to get that eventually. And, um, it was a red light, people were walking. It turned green and there was a woman in front of me who, now keep in mind, it was 3:02 when I looked at my car. So we know the school gets out at 3:05, again, I was saying this was last Thursday. So you know the streets were swamped. Um, parents were walking to pick up their kids. I believe, um, construction workers get out around 3:00 as well, cuz there was just hundreds of green vests all over the place. And there were a lot of cop cars by the construction, by the buildings, and this woman, I, I couldn't believe it, it turned green. She went to make a U-turn, but she didn't go around the cement barrier. She went right over the cement barrier, if anyone was there, she would have killed them. The, her car jumped up and down, and if you have the video or tape, I'm, I'm sure you guys do for, you know, safety reasons, maybe you should try to replay that, again, it happened at 3:02, and use it as, um, learning for our police officers. Because it, it was so crazy, everybody freaked out, they yelled, as I said, her car, cuz she went right over the median. I don't know what she was thinking.
You were making a left from Collins.
Right, she was making a U-turn, I was just making the left into where I live, you know, right by where Navarro is, Deeser Way. And it was just crazy, but I'm just so truly concerned because I know people are saying that, you know, someone had died, but sadly, I wanna respect everyone, we've lost, um, several lives. And it's, um, heartbreaking and very sad, but this is just so fresh. So I was just so surprised to see, just a few weeks later, this happened. She could have just, you know, run 20 people down, and I was so surprised, nobody pulled her over, no one even noticed it. So maybe, I'm just thinking, if you could, um, Mr. Snider, um, Chief Snyder, maybe just see if you could pull that tape and use that as a learning experience, you know, for everyone, just, it may help. Again, thank God no one got run over, but it, it was unusual, I've never seen someone do that, it was, I don't know what she was on. That was a 3:02, Jer, 3:02, and again, that's when the school, that's why it was leery that there wasn't enough police around. You know, cuz we certainly don't want any more accidents. And, um, that's it. Again, if you want the time, write it down and see if you could get a video of it, it's really important. Thank you, I appreciate it. Any questions?
Thank you, Jody. Thank you. Um, Mauricio?
Yes, now the next one is Carlos Baptista. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, uh, actually this is, uh, Fatima Baptista, Carlos's wife. And we live, yes, 16400 Collins Avenue. So it's, um, the Oceania Tower IV that we live on. And, um, I mean, the bike situation is unbelievable. Many times I'm walking on the sidewalk and there's bikes on the sidewalk as well, ringing their bell and practically running me over, I have to, you know, run off to the side so that they can get by. So we do need to have a dedicated bike lane because, uh, bikes and pedestrians on the same sidewalk, it just does not work. Um, one time, actually, I fell. I fell right into the bushes because I was trying to get away from them running over me. So, you know, we need to do something like this. And the other thing is this, I don't for the life of me understand why Bell Harbor and Golden Beach, they have police out there all the time. They have cameras that, you know, catch red light run up. And it works, so we need to do the same thing. We need to slow down the traffic, we need to have police presence. And we need to have cameras with the lights, because let me tell you, I need to cross over to go to the beach club on the other side of Collins. And we wait there until we're able to cross. Every single time, there is at least three or four cars that run through the red light. So in other words, when the light changes, we just stand there for a minute, because every single time, a car is gonna run through those lights. So, I think we need, there's a lot of things, definitely we need a bike lane. And actually, I'm surprised that we haven't had more deaths and surprised that we haven't had even people, like I said. I mean, I fell into the bushes, I could have very easily have fallen onto Collins and then a car run me over. So, you know, uh, something needs to be done. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mauricio?
Uh, that is it, Mayor.
Okay, um, with that, um, I guess I'll take comments from the commission. And I think staff might need a little bit of equal time as well, because I think, I think a lot of things on this resolution, they're all, it's all meritorious, but most of it's being done. So, um, so, so, you know, while I appreciate the resolution, I also wanna give staff a little bit of credit, because I do think staff is going after just about everything on this, and we talked a little bit about that in the last meeting as well, so. But, but I'll take comments from the commission at this point. Yeah, Dana, you had the, Dana, yep, 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 yep. So, um, the commission? The commission, um, who could like to speak? Okay, um, Commissioner Viscar.
Well, you uh, you, you're definitely echoing uh part of my sentiment, because when I, when I read the resolution, um, it seemed to me that. Like you're saying, you know, a lot of it was already being done, so I want to ask the city manager, because here's the thing, right, like we, we sit up here, so we. We understand that's what's being done and and uh. And how things are approached, but a lot of the time the residents don't. So I wanted to ask uh the city manager if he could. Uh, speak to these points, like, you know, we have a nice summary here in the memo. Uh, you know, are we creating flashing lights uh or sensor based pedestrian lights? If you have the the memo in front of you, would you mind going through? And 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 letting us know what um. How the city is approaching each of these things?
Well, what I, what I'd like to do and and what I, what I know and what I have. Um, I think addresses a lot of them, but um what I can do is um. Bring you up to speed going back to um the beginning. When I say the beginning, I'm talking about um. A few years back and bring you up to speed and obviously, the most recent is the quick response we did get from FDOT. So if you'd allow me, I may not be exactly on every point that you're mentioning or in the order it's in here. But I I do know a little bit of the history on 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 all these points here in the city. So if you'd like, I I'll go through that.
I I would appreciate that.
Okay, so, so, so fundamentally, I mean, and and this is uh, I'm going to take a starting point, because. I think the city, you know, from the beginning. Has um had concerns and worked on things in in this regard, but. The 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 city of Sunny Isles Beach Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Program began in May of two thousand and ten. Um, it has always consisted of protection pedestrian safety measures, awareness, bicycle safety and infant safety. There's been approximately fifty events that have been held over the past ten years. Uh, basically nine of those years being active, because two thousand twenty is, like everyone knows, the uh, the the height of the pandemic so far. Um, and with regard to increased traffic enforcement or zero tolerance, if you want to call it that. Um, when the current administration of the police department changed the beginning of two thousand and eighteen. Um, we uh. We, we, we started a. Uh, I have to call it a a pretty formal program on uh increased traffic enforcement and zero tolerance. Just to give you an idea. Um, and of course, I know I don't have the specific details, but I have, um, we have these information, and that's how I get it. Um, since two thousand and eighteen, the highest month of in back then in violations, arrests, warrants. Uh, criminal activity. Between two thousand eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, um, the police ha- had their highest month, just to give you an idea. From 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 back in eighteen into nineteen, fourteen hundred and eighteen contacts. That, that is the combination of tickets, arrests, warrants, um, et cetera, a list of activity that the police typically do. In that, in in that was the highest month. Back then, and the lowest month was four hundred and fifty contacts for one of these things. Like I said, violations, uh speeding tickets, arrests. Uh, 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 criminal uh. Incidents. Um, so that was the lowest. Two thousand, obviously. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, uh CDC guidelines that we were following. There was mu- much less in violations and thousands more of interactions with people regarding COVID. We had, just for example, we had approximately eleven thousand contacts that the police had just with the mask issues with people. Um, that, that takes a lot of time to, to deal with ele- ele- eleven thousand people. On that, not to mention other um areas that the police were involved with regarding the the COVID. Um, two thousand twenty, um, being the worst year, like, like I said, that they were doing all this other work. Violations fluctuated, but it still wasn't that bad. Um, their high, the highest month was six hundred and eighty-four monthly contacts and the lowest was ninety-four. Clearly, the ninety-four was probably at the height of one of the worst months in two thousand twenty for that. Um, so. Uh, so, so obviously, you know, that's been going on. Um. And of course, the latest statistics, which uh we're, we're trying to put out as frequently as we can. Um, I think another one is out, uh, is out today. Uh, we are from early February through, I think it was March sixteenth. Um, the police have issued. Twelve hundred and eighty-six is the number specifically of moving violations. Uh, forty-four traffic crashes. Um, just to, um, just to qualify, I heard some comments over the past week about that number. Um, that number includes um probably, and I'm just assuming this, but I I don't think I'm wrong. Uh, between the um, the types of uh. Uh, of of minor accidents that happen frequently in the commercial shopping center parking lots in our city, they are included in that number. And there's a lot of small fender benders there because of how tight it is. And uh, we have a lot of distraction and median uh accidents. Uh, throughout any given month. So uh, th- those numbers um don't reflect, um, I mean, they can, but they, the majority of them are, are those types of incidents. Um, during that time period, back in October of two thousand twenty, we did receive the Florida League of Cities Pedestrian Safety Award. Um, for all our efforts, not the least of which is something that um. Uh, to my amazement, a few years ago, uh, I think it was about three, we started going on the road to a lot of the real estate people, because they kept complaining about how Collins was dug up and ripped up. And they can't sell units because of that, and uh people are complaining. Um, so we went to make presentations to them about our off Collins walkway for walking, bicycle walks. And I don't think a lot of people know that. We're going to start um advertising that more. You know, seventy percent of the city, you can get on a bicycle or a, uh, or walk from Heritage Park. Um, down to the south end of the city, seventy percent. Of our area can be walked off of Collins. Obviously, we'd like to get it to a hundred percent someday. Uh, but about seventy percent is pretty good. And of course, the most latest and um. And they're, they're, they're starting already. I I got an email. I haven't even had a chance to read from them this afternoon. But um. Commencing right after the tragic accident we had here, um, I was on the phone to the District Secretary of FDOT. Um, and um, our state representatives were. Um, our, our, um, I'm sure some of our commissioners were. And um, FDOT Sec- District Secretary responded by February seventeen. I had a letter with um, you know, a series of um, let's have it here, a a series of um improvements and things to make. To put more awareness on the, the, the um, you gotta remember, it is a signalized. Crosswalk on on Sunny Isles Boulevard, but they've got a whole series of improvements to make there. Which they've started on, and that's going to go uh right through the summer uh with, with, with work there. They've got. Uh, just, just to give you an idea, and again, I don't, I I just got um some, some real details from them that I haven't had a chance to uh, to read yet. But they, they agreed very quickly to add pavement markings and signage. They're going to be adding um. Uh, pedestrian, pedestrian, um, you know, crossing ahead, pavement markers, crosswalks. Within the sixty and ninety days, they're going to improve um with some warning signs and flashing lights. I don't know the exact. Or type that they're um, that they're talking about, but they're, they're, they're getting it in 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 full force. I mean, they're moving ahead. They said in ninety days, they'll have a lot done. Excuse me.
Did, did they also uh happen to comment on the speed limit issue?
Um, the speed limit hasn't come back up again. Now, if you recall, we just went through a few months ago.
Right.
Um, having them review that again. Actually, we had them review. Uh, speed limit, which they still said was not an issue. Ninety-four percent of our, of all our traffic accidents are distraction and not speed. And they did their analysis. I think I sent out uh most of uh their processes. I think I sent it out to everybody in the commission at some point. Um, I can, I can, you know, I can ask them again, but they just kind of finished uh the last one. Um, there was something else that they also, um. Let me think about this a minute. Um. What was something else about relating to the speed limit? I can't recall right now, but they're um. I mean, they've got a lot of, lot of things in in the works, and it's not all, it, it's, it's, it's one sixty-third. Uh, Sunny Isles Boulevard, eight twenty-six, and it's along the intersection of that at at Collins. Oh, and the other thing is, they've expedited. Um, as you recall, we authorized the money a meeting or two ago. For the police department to buy the um, the uh. The the stationary where we'll mount permanently. Um, uh, a radar that that catches everyone's speed, tells them they're speeding, shows them the uh, like the one they have in Golden Beach. Um, well, uh, we've gotten the approval from, thi- this is like lightning for FDOT. I got the official approval yesterday um to install, to, to buy and uh, and install, and go ahead and install them from the state. And we're putting them on Sunny Isles Boulevard, Collins South, Collins North. Um, so, so that's. That, that, that's some progress.
I think for FDOT, that's, that's exceptionally fast and and. It's more than.
It is. They're, they're taking this, they're, they're taking this, you know, I mean, obviously, they're taking this very seriously. Um, you know, they are, they are constrained by, a- and this is, you know, this goes to all, what everyone's saying about. The, you know, having a dedicated bicycle lane or blocking something off. They, they just don't have the amount of um. Of right of way to do as much as I think they'd like, but, you know, I mean, we, we can always, we can always ask them to reevaluate something, but they are moving on a num- on on quite a few things.
And I think that we, I think they moved quickly too, because in the last commission meeting, I read that, I, you know, I actually read that email, because they, they responded very, very quickly. And so um, and so, I, you know, and and so I, I, I was also very impressed, you know, you know, with the level of turnaround, so. But Commissioner Viscar? Go ahead.
Uh, no, th- thank you, Chris. Were you finished?
Um, yeah, the only other thing I'd like to say is, the, the program that, again, the police have been running for um, for, for ten years now, sitting is um. You know, we've gotten state grants to to put some of this on. We, we certainly use our own budget. And they've got this, um, the University of South, South, I think it's a Southern Florida University that's um involved in it. And um, you know, there's more events. We just had one recently, but, but, you know, this next series will go through um mid-May now.
Okay, excellent. So my, it's, so that's, that's um.
North Florida.
Thank, thank you, Chris. Um, and it goes to, it kind of ties in with my comment, remember, but when you said, maybe we can reduce the fees to twenty-five dollars and people will comply. And my response was, that's great if people know about it, right? We have to, we have to get the information out there. And I, I want to commend, you know, the, the residents who who put this forward. Uh, because I think that their recommendations, you know, the, the points that that were brought up, I was at the event as well on, on. Um, uh, uh Gateway, uh, they're excellent ideas, but I think that what. I remember my frustration uh before, I, when I would bring up uh ideas, and I've said this before. It's um. It was, it's really challenging to find. Things that are not being done. Maybe we don't know about them, maybe we don't see them. But most of the time, when I would bring things up, the answer was, that falls under Susan's umbrella and all roads led to Susan Simpson. Right, when I was in the CAC. And, and I'm finding that, that it's something similar here. Uh, these are excellent ideas. And because they're excellent ideas, it's, it's not that we haven't, uh, that the city hasn't heard. The, the concern. It's, it's heard the concern, it's acting on the concerns. Uh, in fact, um, the, the right turn on, on a red light, that was brought up by, by Vice Mayor Srechen as a, um. As a discussion item, I believe, uh, last month or two months ago. And pedestrian safety is at the forefront of a lot of what we do. I, I looked at this and I really didn't see anything that wasn't already being addressed by the city, including the things that we don't. Control, right, but we're trying to uh, um. We're, we're in active communication with, with FDOT. So I, I um, I think. It's wonderful that residents are, are engaging, that they're providing their ideas. Uh, and I think that we need to do a better job at, at, at tooting our own horn and and informing residents of what we're doing. So that, you know, they're not um. Met with, with this issue where it's, it's already being addressed. Uh, and for that, um, you know, I, I. I think everybody's doing great. The residents are doing great. The city is doing great. I, I, I find that then the resolution, um. I don't, I don't see what it accomplishes. I don't think we get anything new. If, if it passes. Uh, and in fact, I think it creates a false, um. Not that it creates, but it, it potentially creates the false impression that. Um. The city wasn't doing something and, and that's why we passed the resolution. I, I would be very careful not to um. Create that impression. Um, so. I, I think. They're great ideas. And we're, we're on them, and I would. For that reason, I would not vote on the resolution, but I would invite the, the residents to continue sharing their ideas.
Um, I'd like to interject a little bit here. Um, the whole point of this exercise was to put. The pen to the paper. And to really distill the information and create a framework. It wasn't to say, well, we're doing this already, we're not doing this, we don't know. We heard about it, somebody knew about it, somebody was doing it. It's more about. Putting together a framework and really advancing that. This is not a, this is not an ordinance. This is just. Putting it in a shape and a form. And these are all, as you put it, excellent suggestions. So for me, I think it's basically. It's an exercise in community engagement and it's an exercise in. In cohesive and, 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 and really just, just moving this whole process together. I don't see it creating any uh false understanding or expectation. If in fact, all of these things are either being discussed or being worked on, where's the falsity of this, of this, of this uh, of these ideas?
Because it's intimating that they're not. It's, it's intimating that they're not.
At all.
That is, you are, you are Dana. You wouldn't be proposing a resolution if you didn't want to try to put staff on the bubble as if they're not doing something. That's the issue. And what you're not doing is, what you're not doing is, you're not being honest with the public and managing their perspective, and that's part of our job.
If you're, if you're telling me now pursuing all five of those, wh- where's the dishonesty if you say, um, we're pursuing all five of those objectives? I didn't, there's nothing in this.
Right. All you had to do was go to staff and ask them. If you didn't come with a resolution that said. You didn't come with a resolution that said, I want to commend staff for doing these things. You came with a resolution that said, we need to do these things. Okay, that's disingenuous. That's disingenuous, because you didn't go to staff. Because, no, Dana, once again, you're grandstanding. You love to grandstand. We know that about you.
That's, that's.
Okay, the fact is, that is true. That is true. And the fact of the matter is. The fact of the matter is, you didn't go to staff and you didn't sit with staff and say, here's the public's concerns. How are they being addressed? You didn't do that. Staff would have sat with you and said, here's how they're being addressed to your point of a framework. That's not what you did. What you did was, you ran a resolution up the pole to try to show the public, hey, look what I'm doing. And the fact is, we all are concerned about these issues, Dana. And the fact is, we have all discussed with staff. The feedback that we've gotten and also our own perspective on these things. And the fact is, staff has been all over it. And that's the truth, okay? You can create this illusion with the public that you're creating all these initiatives, but that is not the case.
This is not.
That is not the case. And you know it, you know it, I know it, and the rest of the commission knows it. And what you're doing is, you're putting your colleagues on the spot to make it look like something that's not going on. And the fact is, you need to work with staff. You don't do it. You don't go to staff and you don't sit with staff and go through things. And the fact is, this list would have been, you would have gotten your answers immediately. You could have reported back to your constituents and said, I sat with the manager and here's all the things that are being done. That's not what you chose to do. What you chose to do was say, look what I'm doing. That's what you chose to do. And all of us find that disingenuous. And frankly, it takes. You're, it takes a collegial environment to get things done. And one thing you're not is collegial. I'm sorry, but that, but. But you are not acting in a collegial environment. And the fact is, because if you were, you would be going back to your constituents and say, I sat with the manager and this is what's going on. So Alex, you gotta go unmute. I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Getting feedback. Getting feedback. So, so I'm done. I'm done, but I wanna, but I gotta call you out on this.
Wait, everybody was out at that, at that-
I wasn't at it, I wasn't invited to that rally. I wasn't invited. You were invited, you were on stage. I wasn't invited. Show me where I was invited.
From what, from my understanding-
Show me where I was invited.
I wasn't, everybody was invited. From what I understand, every single person was invited, okay? And every single-
Well, the city, quite frankly, I'm not discrediting the rally. I'm glad when people take an initiative and get together. I've said it a hundred times. I'm happiest when 300 people show up and they're upset about something, because it shows community engagement. But the fact of the matter is, you know, you were the only one onstage speaking. The city, the manager wasn't asked to speak. I mean, the fact is, the police chief wasn't asked to speak. I wasn't invited to the rally, I can tell you. I checked my email, I checked my phone. And that's why, you know, and frankly, I, I mean, I, I, I felt like I wasn't invited, so that's okay. I'm not, this is not about the rally. This is about, this is about your approach to dealing with these issues and dealing with your colleagues. That's what this is about. So I'm sorry, but I have to call you out on this one, because this is disingenuous, okay? I'm sorry.
I completely disagree. I completely-
Of course you do. Of course you do, because you're, because you're up to your old games. You're up to your old games. Of course you disagree, because this is what you do to try to, you know, promote your, your, your political posture. We get it, but the rest of us don't do it. The rest of us don't do it, because we recognize it takes collegiality and it takes working with staff and working and working together to get things done. And you want to run out, write your own letters to this one and write your own letters to that one? I mean, you do it all the time. But frankly, you know, it, it puts everybody and it makes the city look bad and it puts everybody in a bad position. Because everything on this list was being addressed. I mean, everything on the list was being addressed.
What is disingenuous if everything's being addressed?
Go to staff, go to staff and go through your list ahead of time and don't grandstand at a meeting.
Wait a minute, I went through the proper chain to put this resol- this is a non-binding resolution and I went through the proper-
Doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. It gives the, you know what I know, it gives the, it gives the public the wrong impression. I'm sorry. It gives the public the wrong impression.
One of these, what is wrong?
That's right.
Resolution. What's wrong with this?
We don't need a resolution, because it, it intimates that this, that, that these things aren't being done. And the fact is, they're all being done. That is my point. This is stylistic, Dana. This is stylistic, and it's the way you choose to be a politician, and none of us like it. Okay? I'm telling you flat out. It's because it's the way you choose to conduct yourself. And, you know, and I'm calling you out on it, because, you know, I put up with it every, from time to time. But frankly, this city is not a circus like a bunch of other cities, because each of us come at it in a collegial environment. You are rarely collegial. I hate to say it. We try to be collegial to you, but you're not collegial to the rest of us. And that's how things get done. That is how things get done.
Differently. But you don't have-
Of course you do. Of course you do.
Listen, you don't have to vote in favor of this. You have basically confirmed what everything this resolution stands for. If everybody's working on it, nobody came to me and said, oh, by the way, the police are out on the streets or we're doing this conference or we're doing this. I'm not getting that communication.
Try coming to City Hall and talking to staff, Dana. Have an engagement with staff. You don't, try coming and engaging.
That's not true at all. That's absolutely untrue. And, but you don't have to, you don't have to give me a tongue lashing like this. It's not, it's really-
I'm not giving you a tongue lashing, but I'm tired, this is stylistic, Dana. This is stylistic. The fact of the matter is, there's nothing wrong with what's on this list.
That's right. That's right.
The way you're dealing with it is improper, because it's intimating that staff is not doing their job and they are doing their job. Okay? Okay. That's in, in your opinion, but I can tell you, if I'm a staff member, that's how I would feel. I can absolutely guarantee you that. So, if you don't think that's true, go have a conversation with the police chief or the manager offline and see how they feel when you, when you propose something like this. And then you're gonna, and then you're gonna completely understand what I'm telling you. Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Um, thank you. Uh, I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments. Uh, first of all, Chris, thank you for, uh, that level of detail. I was actually on the hall with, uh, FDOT with Chris yesterday, and I gotta tell you that if it wasn't for the relationship that our city manager had with FDOT, they wouldn't have been able to make that decision right there on the phone. Chris asked if he could put up these speed signs, um, trackers, uh, without a permit, and he said to him, absolutely, I trust your guys.
I'm sorry, the Vice Mayor's audio is in and out on, on our end.
Can you hear, can you hear me better now or no? Okay, sorry about that. Uh, I, I want to commend the chief and PD, um, and I, I mean, look, yesterday I had someone come over my house complaining that she got a citation for not waiting the three seconds on the stop sign. I complained to her, you should have gotten a ticket. You know, you guys have been unbelievable. I've seen you out there on a regular basis. Uh, yeah, I think that a lot of the residents feel that it could be more, but I can tell you that, uh, with every day, they are seeing more and more of you out there giving the tickets, and I don't think that's necessarily what we all have to be doing, is getting citations or tickets to, uh, act appropriately. And I, I, I agree somewhat with the mayor, we don't have to pass a resolution to do these things, because we are doing these things. I spoke to the, uh, SRO at the school, she's giving at least five speeding tickets a day in the school zone. That's unheard of. Our, our parents used to never get tickets, and this is a, this is a huge change in, in the way that we are interacting. Uh, and it's because the residents ask for it. Dana, you mentioned, you know, the voice of the residents. The voice of the residents, uh, they're being heard. They're being heard when we speak to them out in the street, when they call me, uh, at City Hall, when I'm talking to them at school. Uh, uh, I don't know if you remember, uh, I was tasked with putting together the, uh, workshop, which is gonna happen next week, where it's going to be just on this subject at all, where, uh, just this subject rather, and all residents are welcome to come. And it's gonna have every single expert that makes those decisions, including FDOT. Everyone will have an opportunity to give all their ideas, from speed bumps to signage to, somebody said to me, they want to see those spikes at the stoplights. If somebody should run the spot, uh, stop sign or stoplight, they're going to get their tires blown out. I mean, there's been a lot of ideas and some a little crazy, some, some that are very reasonable. And FDOT is willing finally to really listen to this, because this isn't just an issue in Sunny Isles Beach. This is an issue up and down the coast. Uh, you know, my biggest criticism of Chris is that you don't advertise enough all the good work you do. And that's because I think that in a lot of ways, you just assume that you don't have to, and perhaps you don't, because you're just doing your job. And the same thing goes for the chief. Uh, we live in an incredibly safe city, as we have seen from the brand reporting. The tragic accidents that have happened in the last couple of years are heartbreaking. Uh, but, uh, thank God there haven't been more. Next week, besides the workshop, the PTSA is also sponsoring a Safety Night. The police department is presenting. Uh, Ina Anthony's mom is gonna speak at that presentation. I invite anyone who's available on Tuesday evening to come. Uh, there is a lot happening, uh, both within the city, with the city staff, as well as, uh, outside uh, community, um, members and, and leaders. And I urge you, you know, Commissioner Goldman, to just spend a little bit more time with the city staff to get this information, because it's not something that is being hidden. Uh, it's, it's there for all of us.
I disagree. I haven't received-
Wait, hold on, I, I'm speaking, I'm speaking. Dana, I'm speaking.
I respectfully disagree with that comment.
I understand that. You had your, you had your, you had your time.
Yeah, Melissa has the floor. Lu- Melissa's the floor.
That's wrong.
Uh, just last week, we sent out the very first road report. They gave all of this information. I believe tonight, there's one that's scheduled, if it hasn't gone out already, that talks about the meetings that we're having next week, that gives an update, basically all this information that Chris has just given. Uh, so if you're not getting that, maybe you're not, you know, subscribing to the alerts from the city. I have no idea. But, okay, in any case, I'm not gonna argue with you. It's available to whomever wants that information. And I have that information, I've been sharing it with parents, with residents, whomever asks me. So I urge you to, to ask if, if you're not getting it, because that's a shame. But, um, I, I haven't had no problem getting that information.
I just found out about next week's, uh, meeting when I was in briefing, after I had already put the resolution out. Chris told me, oh, by the way, we're having a meeting on the 25th, a safety meeting.
It was just, it was just, it was just, because it was just confirmed.
After the resolution was drafted and approved and vetted, okay?
You could, you could have pulled the resolution.
That, that was just confirmed the day ago by FDOT, because that was important happening there.
So there's nothing, you know, there's-
Again, Dana, it's stylistic. It's not the issue of the resolution. It's the issue of you going to staff. It's, it's style of, it's stylistic, because it's the issue of you not trying to make staff look like they're not doing their job. That's what I'm talking about here. And frankly, we will, we will lose good staffers, we will lose good people that run the city if this is how we treat them. And that's it. That's how I feel, you know? And I'm sorry, but that's how I feel. And I think if you sit with staff members and you have an honest dialogue with them, you'll get honest feedback. But you choose not to. You choose to go off on your own most of the time and do things without conferring with staff. And I, believe me, I know, because they voice their frustrations to me. But I don't reign, I don't, I don't get to manage you. I ca- I get to manage staff. That's how it works. So, um, so, you know, and, and only in a public forum can I talk to you about something like this. So we're, unfortunately, we have to air our dirty laundry in a public forum. So, okay, the, um, Dana, um, Commissioner Lama's not spoken. I don't know if you've got something to say, Alex?
Yeah, I just want to say, fir- first of all, I want to thank Chris, because, um, he installed two speed bumps along 172nd Street. And I could tell you, I hang out at Town Center Park and they made an immediate, uh, you know, impact on that. I didn't see cars speeding the way they usually speed before the speed bumps. Now, uh, if you could, Chris, you know, uh, after that curb, after that speed bump right by Port of Bellagio, if you could perhaps install some more speed bumps, uh, you know, from that point on, uh, to 163rd, that'd be great. Um, so, so with this resolution, obviously, you know, uh, all of these points or, or, or most of these points have been worked on, or are being worked on. So I, I wanna, you know, recognize and appreciate the feedback from the residents. You know, it's really important to get the feedback from the residents, because a lot of times, you know, you have these ideas, you know, these are, like, uh, Commissioner Goldman says, these are common sense, uh, ideas that, that pretty much we all think about. But you know, there's always that new angle, that new way of thinking about it when you get the, uh, the feedback from residents. So I appreciate the phone calls, I appreciate the emails. Um, one thing that I want to point out also is that, um, you know, it's important for everybody to be extra alert. You know, like Maria Quinn said, w- we, we now live in a metropolis, you know? And then unfortunately, in South Florida, we've had this boom in construction and, uh, the roads have not been, you know, prepared accordingly. You know, they have not been prepared with the pedestrian in mind and traffic, to be honest with, uh, with you, I mean, in, in most parts of South Florida, is, is, is difficult to, to deal with. And, uh, I think that now, um, you know, with the efforts from the city staff and now the pressure that we have on FDOT and with the help of the county, I think that now we're gonna be able to, to, to perhaps, um, get a quicker turnaround. I know that Chris has a good relationship with FDOT and a lot of those things, um, are immediately being worked on. But yeah, I mean, we need to find a way to reconcile that metropolis that we live in and, um, you know, with the, with the pedestrian activity and the bikers. I mean, that's, that's, uh, paramount. And I think the approach is gonna be also not, not only focused on on, on, on our city and Sunny Isles Beach, but I think it's an, i- i- it's the whole area. Because most of the traffic that, that courses through here is, is not from Sunny Isles Beach. So, you know, FDOT and, and, and the state, they design everything to move as much traffic as possible, but you know, it cannot be at the expense of our quality and our safety. So I believe that they need to, you know, work fast to protect our pedestrians, to protect us and, and also our drivers, you know? But I really ask everybody, drivers, pedestrians, uh, bikers, to be extra alert. Because the problem is that a lot of people are distracted and a lot of people are neurotic. You know, they, they're either speeding, they have somewhere to go, uh, and they need to get there now or yesterday. So I, I really ask, uh, that this needs to be, uh, an effort from, that we need to tackle from moral angles. FDOT, the pedestrians, the drivers, city staff, the county, et cetera, so we could really find a solution. I mean, it's incredible during the rally that they mentioned that from 2008 to 2018, accidents where, you know, pedestrians were involved increased by 54%. So that's, that's a huge red flag. And that tells us all that we, we all need to be better, you know? Uh, for our own lives and our own safety, seriously. And, um, you know, I, I, I do support the resolution. I know that all of these points have been worked on and are being worked on by staff. It's nothing new, let's say. You know, I do appreciate the, 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 the feedback from the, from the residents and the phone calls and emails and ideas. And I do support it to validate and recognize both the work of the city staff and, and the ideas from the, uh, residents, you know? I think that the more we work together, the better. I mean, this is the only way we could move forward. So, in that sense, uh, not taking away from one party or another, um, you know, I do support it just to validate and recognize, uh, everybody's work.
Alex is a much better diplomat than I am.
You got it Toyota. You got it Toyota. You got it Bentley. You got it. You got it Ferrari. You got a Lamborghini. You got it.
Are you gonna give me all of those, Dana?
Because the point, yeah, the point is, and, and yes, it was far more eloquently stated. The point is, it is completely a validation of the voices of the residents. There was no intent of disrespect or, or, or disingenuous idea or that, that I'm not validating. I, the first thing I said was, we, I know that some of this stuff is in the works. I'd like to be included on those emails for once, and I'd like to get a little more information, which is not really, uh, piping through in some respects. But there is absolutely, there is no level of disrespect. If, if there is, I sincerely apologize upfront. I, I think we, I think the police department's been doing a magnificent job of, of stepping up and, you know, amping up enforcement. I believe that some of this stuff is in the works. It's really more of a tribute and homage to the residents than anything else. So I want to, I want to commend my, uh, colleague, uh, Commissioner Lama for really understanding the spirit and intent for which this resolution was forwarded.
So, in closing, the only thing I would say, Dana, is if you want to know something, go and voice your discussions with staff and they'll tell you. But the fact is, you go off on your own a lot and you don't do that, and that's why you're in the dark sometimes. A lot of times. A lot of times. I've watched you, I've watched you and I've gotten the feedback from staff. So I am echoing their frustration. And this is why this, this is why this resolution set me off. Because I felt like we are giving the public a false sense that these things weren't being done. And the fact is, is that they're all being done. Not some of them, all of them, okay? So they're all being done. Alex is a great diplomat and he's, he's threading the needle on this one and I appreciate it.
I'm, I'm in sales, so I know, I know how to do it.
I know you are, I know you are. You're a much better, you're a much better, you know, and, and I've been a ce- and I've been a CEO my whole life, so I'm, I'm not in sales, so.
So you know what, if you're gonna do it, talk about it. And I shouldn't be in the dark. If I'm a commissioner and I'm in the, you're doing it and I don't even know what to do.
Try, try engaging with staff, Dana. Try engaging. Try engaging on a regular basis. It's not unfair. I'm telling you, I'm giving you good, Dana, instead of arguing with my feedback, take it constructively. Because, you know, take it constructively. You're getting constructive feedback. You know me, I don't lie and I don't play games and I don't, and I don't dance around things. But you're getting direct constructive feedback. And that's why this resolution got me upset, okay? And, you know, and so, because I believe that it's stylistically misleading, that's all. And I, you know, I voiced it, I think we hacked it out. And unfortunately, this, you know, this is the downside of the sunshine law, okay? We don't get to have a conversation like this in private, and unfortunately, we have to air it publicly. So, um, so that's, that, that's the story. Um, but in any case, um, with that, I will call for a motion for resolution. What number is it? 10G?
Mayor, did you want to allow, there was, Jody and Jerry had their hands raised again. Do you want to go back?
Did they have it raised during the public comment section?
They did. They, they had it already-
They did, okay. Okay, if they did, okay, that's fine, that's fine, so.
This is, this would be the second time that they comment for the same item, so it's-
Okay, that's okay, that's okay. Let them talk, let them talk. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Jerry and Jody.
Yeah, um, Jody, one eighty five sixty North Bay Road, um, Golden Shores. Uh, wow, that was a little intense, quite frankly, um, to be watching. Uh, not funny.
Sorry.
I have to laugh, I'm sorry. I don't need.
And I'm not laughing Dana. It's not, it's not funny. I'm very rattled, very disrespectful. We're all, you know, for, you know, to treat a woman like that or for, if you treated a man like that, I would say shame on you. Um, I'm gonna start with what Jennifer said, that you were taking it upon yourself to say that really everything is going okay and the residents, it was a fair quote, you, the residents are happy. And quite honestly, I don't know where you're getting that from because if you listen to the complaints in the meetings, um, there's people who are not happy. There are children and adults who are dying, car accidents, bicycle accidents. Um, there's just.
Racing.
Ra- racing and we just have a new incident that happened in our area and I'm trying to get Chris to please pull that tape for me. We had a discussion about a gate, um, about three months ago, but in our area, if you could get that for me, Chris. Um, the Golden Shores meeting, one day before the um, Sunny Isles meeting, about three months ago, was the only Golden Shores meeting that we had. And a few residents were asking for gates. Um, and I was told it absolutely should be recorded as long as someone from government is involved and, and those, uh, yeah. You were involved, Chris, and Claudia was involved and Larissa. So I was told that that definitely should have been recorded. Is that correct?
Jody, can, can we stay on the resolution?
No, no, no.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But if we can stick with it, it'd be great.
Bud, please, it's regarding what Jennifer said about everyone's happy and, and there's no problems or whatever they're working on has come to fruition. And actually, I don't know where that came from because that's really not the case. If you go to the meetings and you listen to people, you know, and, and you, you go online, we have a lot of problems here. I mean, our area alone, we just had people drag racing again. And I know I spoke with um, Sergeant, is it Sergeant or Captain Snyder? Chief?
Chief Snyder. He's a chief.
Okay, bear with me while on the news here. And we spoke a while back, like I think this goes back three years ago, pre-COVID. And I, you know, have a video, whatever I say, I could back it up. And I wanted to show him this video because there were two, I believe, oddies, two young kids, drag racing here. We were, they were supposed to follow through on it and sadly, it wasn't followed through. And there's just so many things that aren't happening that we were promised. And I don't know about what's going on with you guys, why I'm, I'm getting that maybe um, Dana is, you know, not submissive and she's doing her own thing and that doesn't make everybody happy. And I think in politics, we need someone who's not submissive, someone who speaks their mind and speaks for the people because things aren't great. And I know you lost your temper Bud, but I'm just saying that kind of, I'm sure I'm not the only person saying that got a little uncomfortable. But I know things are not happening the way they should be. There's been too many deaths, as I said, what happened last Thursday and there were no cop cars there. In our area, we had two Lamborghinis about, what was that, a week ago? Ten days ago? I have the video. I would love to show it to you.
They were from the desert.
It, it was just out of control and they had lights and cameras and actions and they were racing up and down. And nobody takes this seriously. I mean, I've been complaining about this for so long. I politely, you know, I want to work with you. I've tried. I mean, I don't want to take this to the news. How'd I take these clips to the news? Had I taken them to the news with all the deaths that we've had? It doesn't look good for Sunny Isles. So if everybody could brag and say how great you're doing and how this, you know, to talk about one thing is great, but have something actually happen. And I adore all you. I wish you nothing but the best and great health. But really, we're doing a lot of talk, but nothing's really come to fruition. And that's the bottom line. We still have people racing here. We have homeless people living in our area.
Thank you.
Breaking in.
Thank you, Jody.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, you know, please, let's not insult people if they want to say something. I mean, we like as residents to hear everybody's input. You cut me off.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for cutting.
Yeah, no, 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 you're still on, but, but, but it's been three minutes. Um, so thank you. So.
Okay, I know.
We, yeah, yeah, we can still hear you. So thank you, Jody. Okay, Mauricio, any other, is that it?
May I respond, uh, Mr. Mayor, just a comment on that?
Yep, yep.
Thank you. I, I just don't want uh, to, my comments to be mischaracterized, that everything is great and everybody's happy. Uh, speaking to the points on the resolution, you know, just like Commissioner uh, Goldman said, you know, these are, some of these things are being worked on. The, there are issues. These are legitimate issues. It's not that there's no problems. These are legitimate concerns. They are great ideas. And we are addressing them. But, you know, we may not be advertising it and maybe people are not aware, so they think nothing is getting done. But I don't, I don't want to be mischaracterized that, that I think everything is hunky dory and there's no problems and everybody's happy.
You're muted, Mayor.
So, some folks would like me muted tonight. Um, so, okay, let's um, so, let's um, let's call the question on item ten G.
Just a motion, Mayor. If anyone would like to make it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yep, I'm asking for a motion. Okay, move by Commissioner Goldman. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lama? Okay, all, all in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Symbolically, I'm opposed. Okay, motion fails. Okay, that is the end of our resolutions tonight. Let's move on to, we have one discussion item. Item twelve A, noise pollution.
Okay, you can hear me, right? So I went to, in direct response to your earlier comments, I have come to Chris, our city manager, on this issue multiple times. I had a discussion item four months ago. I raised it again. I've had discussions with Ed and Valerie. They know I've been circling around this issue. I have not avoided or circumvented or circumnavigated in any way. This is a legitimate issue that's been raised by residents in our city about these uh, noisy mufflers, these aftermarket mufflers that create these very loud noises. And I have posed the question and I will pose it and I don't know, Ed or Valerie, is Valerie on the, on the call or she's, or Ed or you, only you? Is Valerie, is Valerie on? So Valerie can pop up.
They're both on.
Okay, so my, my question, and I've had discussion after discussion with Chris and he can attest to this, nothing disingenuous about it. The question is, is it a violation of the law to have these, these aftermarket noisy mufflers? And if so, what is the violation? And so Valerie, can we, can we get a response on that?
Yes, it is a traffic violation, a non-criminal traffic violation.
Hmm, okay. So it is something that there is a violation of the law. In other words, when these uh, these, these, um, these vehicles have the mufflers, whether or not they've installed it by the manufacturer, it's an aftermarket or so forth. These very loud noise vehicles, right, that have this, this is a traffic, it is a violation of state law, correct?
Correct.
So the harder issue is, can we do anything about it? Right? Isn't that the, isn't that the issue? Because it keeps coming up and up and up with the residents about this noise that these, these, these cars have. And I'm sure other cities have had this problem or they've had to address this, correct?
We have no idea what other cities have done. Uh, this is a traffic enforcement issue. Um, and so I would defer to the chief so that he could tell you how, how his folks have to go about trying to pull these folks over for what they're doing.
Okay, so.
Chief, come off mute. Go ahead.
Okay, everybody can hear me? Okay, perfect. Uh, there, there's no question, this is a traffic violation. It's actually the uh, the statute for it is three sixteen, two seven two, exhaust systems and the prevention of noise. Okay? But let me just give you a little historical perspective. These um, statutes were written back in the nineteen seventies. Okay, and back in the nineteen seventies, I know Mr. Mayor and a few other people may realize that back in those days, there was mandatory vehicle inspections and exhaust system inspections by the state of Florida. And that's normally where these things would be detected and where the corrections would be made because if you didn't come into compliance with this, you would, uh, you would not be issued your, your license tag. So anyway, uh, back in the eighties, they did away with all these things. And that's when some of these problems started to crop up. Um, and this, the statute itself is very simplistic, the, the one that, that governs this. And basically what it says is, in no event shall an exhaust system allow noise at a level which exceeds a maximum decibel level that's established by the regulation of Department Environmental Protection. So that part of it's very simple. But there's a second part of this stuff that's covered by the definitions of how you go about this. Okay? And that is where we have problems. Okay? And that's where this is just not a easily enforceable uh, statute. And I'll say exactly why. So basically, they, they, um, they give us two different decibel levels. One's for vehicles that are going thirty-five miles an hour or less. And then we have a decibel level that, for over thirty-five miles an hour. Okay, now, in order for us to be able to measure that decibel, we have to follow a certain set of rules. And I'll read to you exactly what it says you have to do. It says, no person shall operate or be permitted to operate a vehicle on, at any time, on any condition of a roadway grade, load, acceleration, deceleration, in such a manner as to generate a sound level that's in, in X X of the following limits for a category of motor vehicle and the applicable speed at a distance of fifty feet from the center of the lane of travel under measurement procedures established by subsection three. So in essence, what that means is, an officer would have to get out of his vehicle. He would have to walk into traffic and find himself in the middle of the lane that the vehicle is traveling in. He would have to use a speed measuring device to capture speed and then he would have to have a decibel reader to capture the decibel levels. Then he would have to get back into his car and then try to go down and catch up to the violator and pull them over. So it's obviously not a very easy thing to enforce. It's actually dangerous for the officers. Especially, could you imagine having to step out into the middle of Collins Avenue in the middle of rush hour traffic? It would probably be very dangerous. But even with that said, um, we reached out to just about every municipality in Miami-Dade County, including Miami Beach and all of the coastal communities up here, which are affected by the same, same exact issues. And they get exactly the same complaints from their residents as well. And, and we're all frustrated by it because we understand, we totally and completely understand their frustration. But the fact of the matter is, nobody to, including the Florida Highway Patrol, is enforcing this right now because of the way this is written. Um, it's just, it's a very cumbersome way to try to enforce traffic. And to be quite honest with you, I think for us, and I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to even trying. I, I was telling uh, Chris that I was gonna reach out to Claudia and see if we could borrow one of the, the code enforcement's uh, decibel readers, just to see if we can, we can go out there and try to, to make something happen with it. But again, I think you all can see, this is a very cumbersome way to try to in, enforce an infraction.
I mean, that, that's very, um, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's upsetting, but it's upsetting to hear and it's, 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 it is, it appears to be the case. I guess from my standpoint, there's probably a very finite number of vehicles that are here that are doing this.
No, honestly, Commissioner.
Is it that big? Is that?
Com- com- Commissioner, let me tell you something. And this, this is, I think, and this is what's the difference between back in the nineteen seventies versus now. You know, back in the nineteen seventies, you did not have the Lamborghinis and, and the Barraris and, and all of these high-end European vehicles traveling on the highway. Those vehicles, they, they, their engines rev at a much higher level. And the other thing that I think comes into play is whether or not these vehicles are making that amount of noise when they're at idle. Because that, that's gonna tell you whether or not they have a defective muffler or things along those lines. If it, if they're quiet when they're idling, chances are it, it's not a defective device. So a lot of these vehicles are coming into the United States and, and they're coming through our borders and they're being allowed to come in and be sold in our country. So, you know, it, it's just, the statute itself is very clear. It just says you can't, you can't do it. But it's the enforcement part of it that makes it very, very cumbersome and difficult for us. And it, let me tell you something. If it was a doable situation for us, we're, we're not adverse to going out there enforcing this, not at all. Um, because I certainly understand, I understand the public's concern. I understa-, you know, because it's not just our community, it's, it's all the communities along the coast.
So Dana, Dana, that, so I, I like cars. So I got, I got cars and I build hot rods and stuff like that. They sell a device for a hot rod that has a, that has a switch on the dash that it opens your tailpipes to make it super loud. And then you flip the switch and it closes and it reroutes your exhaust through the muffler. So in other words, you know, I mean, this is the kind of stuff that's out there. So my point is to the chief's point, the enforcement is really, really difficult. But to his point also, like on a high-end car, it's the same thing. You know, at idle, those cars are very quiet. And then boom, and then when they take off, it really, um, you know, you know, it really goes to town. So it's hard. I would say that's a good one to lobby the state for. You know, because I'm sure that, you know, that, you know, you know, that's gotta get done at the state level. And um, and then, you know, something that would be, and honestly, that's something that they, that they, I don't, I don't see where there'd be a lot of opposition to that at the state level. Because everybody faces this, you know?
See, I thought, yeah, I thought it was more the aftermarket modified mufflers that was creating the issue, not these new cars that kind of rev up and have strong engines, right? I mean, I think what people are complaining about are more the modified mufflers, right?
No, but it's both. It's both. No, those Ferrari, I mean, like, like a Lamborghini or Ferrari, when they come off the line, oh my gosh. You know, I mean, it's super noisy, super, super noisy. And um, but it's also, but it's, but it's both. Because like I'm telling you, the hot rod community, you know, they, they buy these fancy mufflers and they buy the modified things and they buy the kit to bypass the muffler. It's all out there. But how do you catch it?
No, I mean, we don't want to endanger the lives of, you know, we don't want to, the, the.
Yeah, yeah.
What is it? The medicine isn't worth the cure kind of thing. But, but I certainly, you know, I just thought maybe it's, it's a finite number of vehicles that we could almost have like a self-policing idea that we know which vehicles in the city this really relates to.
I mean, they got Chevrolet, they got it on the Camaro and Ford's got it on the Mustangs now. I mean, that, that sent me over the edge. I mean, I've seen a number of them with it on now.
Yeah, but, um, but you know, with a couple of million cars going through the city, I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to pick out the onesie twosies, but yeah. Sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
No, it's, it's definitely all of the above. Um, I mean, I, I live along, along eight twenty-six, so I hear it. And I know I've said this before and I had looked into this, you know, prior and, and gotten this, this, this response that basically there's, you know, not a whole lot that we can do. Um, and it's not necessarily a speeding issue because initially I thought it was speeding. Because in my mind, speeding cars are louder. I don't know why, why I make that, that connection, but uh, and um, and the police department, you know, came out and they, they uh, you know, they, they sat here, you know, by the bridge, you know, a couple of nights. And, and they determined that most of the time it wasn't even uh, speeders. It was just these loud cars. And I saw it for myself, walking around the city, you know, a car going ten miles an hour approaching a stop sign, just making a ridiculous amount of noise. And the fact that we're vertical does not help. It bounces off. Uh, you can, you can be on the twelfth floor and you still hear it. Um, it, it's, it's definitely affecting our quality of life. I mean, I, I, um, but, but I understand that the enforcement and, and, and everything else uh, is, is, is out of our hands. So it's unfortunate.
Yeah, I, I, I think, I think it's gotta be brought up at a, at a state level, definitely. I don't know what could be done there. I mean, I don't know about, you know, mufflers or, you know, I'm not into cars. I have a Toyota Camry. I, I could care less what car I drive, so, but uh, yeah, we need to bring it up to the state. We need to think about that.
If I could just add just a couple of more things real quick, I promise. It just, it also goes back to, to my personal opinion. I don't think back in the nineteen seventies that these statutes were designed for law enforcement, enforcement. I, I believe that these were designed to, to be taken care of at the inspection level. Um, you know, which was, which was easy, um, but it's not. But you know, to Commissioner Viscar's point too, it, it's interesting that she said about the noise and, and you know, the reverberation off of buildings. That's the other thing that you've got to be, take, be able to take into a fact. We can't, we can't, when we're taking a decibel reading on, on a car, there's all that ambient noise that's in the city between construction noise, other vehicles and things along those lines. So it's gonna be a, even if we were to be able to successfully write a citation on it, it'd be very difficult to uh, to defend it in court. To be perfectly honest with you. And at that point, we're just kind of wasting our time. So.
Yeah. Yeah, the boom boxes are just as bad. You know, the big space speakers. Yeah, yeah, the boom boxes are just as bad, you know, the big space speakers on the, your windows are rattling, so. Um, so, okay, any more, um, discussion regarding this item? Dana, I think you got clarity at the very least. I think you got some clarity, which is good.
Yeah, that's all I really wanted. I wanted to understand. Is, is it anything that we can enforce? It, it, you know, it's a, it's a twofold issue. And if we can't enforce it, it's, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, it's a quality of life.
Yeah, we got to call our buddies at the state and see if they can, see if they can propose something, so. Okay, Mauricio, is there anything else on the, on the list tonight?
Yes, did you want to hear the public comments for this item?
Oh, okay, excellent. I'm sorry. I should have asked them earlier. Go ahead.
Noise. Um, okay, the first one is from Anastasia Panfilova. Her comment is, uh, her address, I'm sorry, is 16485 Collins Avenue. "We need to set hours separate from weekdays or weekends for buildings and businesses when it's allowed to use blowers and other tools that make too much noise. Building next to us uses a blower at 6:30 to 7:00 a.m. It's not acceptable. Also, please do something about cars. Makes, make, some make so much noise, it feels like multiple gunshots."
I hate blowers. They aggravate me, so.
Uh, the next one is Andrei Richikov, 20172nd. Uh, "Most of, most of the time, it's the same cars. Seems like recently we got another wave of Fast and Furious fans as a number of cars with modified lo- loud exhaust explode and car races across the city become every day and night events. You can hear cars racing in Sunny Isles all the way from Aventura. They are sold out. Those cars wake people up in the middle of the night. You can read more comments and complaints from the residents on Facebook page, Sunny Isles Beach Insider, and he provides the link." Um, our next one is Marian Khalifa, 17555 Collins Avenue. "Too much noise on weekends, mornings from the street cleaning and very noisy car which are racing through Sunny Isles." And the last one is Carlos Alberto Calcedilla, 23174th Street. "I live on the 22nd floor condo facing south with direct view of 172nd Street and well west of Collins Avenue, Winston Towers 300 building. Even from my geographic location, cars with modified exhaust mufflers that produce excessive unnecessary backfire explosions for who knows what motivation cause extreme noise pollution at all hours of the day and night and cause a dramatic decline in the quality of our lives and endanger public safety by excessive speeding and aggressive driving. Not to mention terrible noise bearing on our community. Please address the issue." That's it for the public speaker cards.
Okay.
One person that raised their hand.
Okay.
Jody or Jerry?
Yes, hi.
All right.
Um, I was thinking.
Hey Jerry.
Hi bud. Um, I was thinking, chief, is it possible that we could, uh, maybe have the state have, have, uh, the cars go back to two license plates? This way, on your, uh, speed readers, you could have cameras to catch people as distracted drivers. And also possibly you could have one of your sound meters on the, um, you know, be incorporated into the traffic readers as well.
That's a great idea. That's a really good idea because, yeah, like you said, you can get them coming and going and you could catch them with, um, with monitoring devices, yeah. Yeah, so.
And we have so many cars now with plates or no plates at all.
I know, I know, yeah. I'm, I'm sure with the state, it would, it would be a money issue because people have to buy two license plates. But the fact is, I agree with you. It also just helps police, it, it helps law enforcement tremendously when they can identify the car from the front or the back. So I completely agree, yeah.
Just an idea.
So we'll, yeah, yeah, we'll throw that one on the lobbying of the state with the, um, with the noise pollution. So the two license plates and, and, um, and, and nail the, the, the noise pollution, so. So thanks, Jerry.
Okay, and that is it for this item, mayor. We do have the add-on by Commissioner Viscara, which is for the red light camera.
Okay, Commissioner Viscara.
Well, I think this one is self-explanatory. Uh, I wanted to bring it up as a discussion item, obviously, uh, you know, in, in light of, of the focus on pedestrian safety uh, and traffic and speeding and all of that. Uh, we can't have police officers at every street corner 24/7, but, um, I wanted to know if, if it was possible to, um, to revisit bringing the, the red light cameras, uh, at, at what capacity we can do it? Is it possible to do it on, on, uh, on the state roads, which are the big problem? Um, and, and also, you know, in the, uh, on our city streets? So I wanted to hear from, uh, obviously I think it's, it, it would be beneficial to us. I, as far as I know, it's working well in Aventura. Uh, I definitely, uh, don't think I can beat a yellow at Aventura. I make sure I slow down for the yellow. Uh, and so I'm wondering if, um, if it's something that we can consider, uh, chief? Would, is that something we can bring back?
Is it the chief or, no, the manager?
Whoever can, whoever can.
Either one. Chief, chief, go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Very good. Obviously, it's the manager's final decision, so, uh, he has the final word on this. But listen, we would never be, uh, we would never object to that. Anything that we can get to, to increase traffic safety in this city, we're all for. Uh, yeah, again, there's, there's hurdles with FDOT because, again, putting these cameras on there right away, you know, there, there's all kinds of approvals that would have to happen. And I remember back.
Do you know, chief, do you know if they have them, uh, along Collins and other parts in Miami Beach and in?
No, we had them at one point.
We, we did.
Jennifer, we had them.
Okay.
But I, I know that, uh, initially FDOT had a problem with, uh, anything going on there right away. So it was, it was, it was jumping a lot of hurdles. And there was an awful lot of lawsuits, federal lawsuits about, uh, you know, it being unconstitutional. And, you know, these things were having, they were being upheld and then they had to go through the appellate process. And this has been going on for a long time. And right now, the way it mostly stands is that they're allowed. So it, that's until the next lawsuit comes along and, uh, you know, and kind of stops the process. But, uh, we, we would not be adverse to it whatsoever.
We can put them up between lawsuits.
Yeah, 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 at one point, Jennifer, early on, this is before your time, um, it was like a revenue issue where like they were, we, we, you know, we were, at the time, something came down. The lawsuits hit, then there was a revenue issue, and then eventually they came down. But we had them about, I, because I can remember there was one by Einstein's. And, um, and I can still remember that one there. Chris, but I think it's a good idea.
You had them between like 2006 to '8, something like that.
That's, that's what I, that's what I remember. Yeah, I remember now. But, but Chris, I think it's, I think, you know, given the emphasis we're putting on everything else, listen, you know, my attitude is, let's, let's have obnoxious enforcement.
We should probably pick a couple of key, two or three key areas most. I got to go back out and see what the, what the, you know, the cost and all the fees are. Because back then, one of the big issues was because they didn't think they were as reliable as they should be. So one of the requirements, which I think, uh, because like I said, I wasn't here from when you got them and when you got rid of them. But, um, I had heard a lot about them. The, um, one of the requirements, like they, they actually shut them all down for a while when they were getting lawsuits on it. And then they came back with the requirement that a live, you know, that a breathing person, a real person has to watch all those tapes after they're done to verify that there's no mistakes. You know, that, um, that the car actually, you know, ran the red light. But, um, and, and that, I think is still a requirement, chief. I don't know if you're, uh, up on that, but I think that's still a requirement.
But there's services that do that, Chris. There's services that do that. So I think, but I, but I guess my point is, I don't think they'll make money, but I don't think we need to do it to make money. I think we need to do it just for mitigation purposes.
Right.
I don't care if that makes money, you know, even if it costs us some money, it's just additional enforcement. It doesn't matter. So there's services.
I don't think it will.
I remember, yeah, yeah, I don't, I, I think it's probably a, you know, a break even at, at best, or, but it doesn't matter. I mean, but I do think it's worth looking into, so I completely agree, Jennifer, right, you know? So Chris, why don't you, you know, why don't, why don't you see what the latest and greatest is?
Yeah.
Yeah, good, good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, um, I think that's enough for one night. Mauricio, anything else?
Yes, mayor, we have just one last comment from Citizens Forum. Um, it's actually just an email that we received. I'll try to read it as quickly as, as I can. Um, this comes from, um, give me one second, Layskintana. She's a resident in Golden Shores. Um, her email reads, "Dear Commissioners and Residents of Sunny Isles, I not only have my primary residence in Sunny Isles, but I also own four other properties within Sunny Isles Beach. I adore this city and am truly vested in it, not only as a homeowner, but as a landlord and successful business owner. The matter referenced below should be of utmost importance to all Commissioners, committee members, city employees, and residents of Sunny Isles. This entire case revolves around and is a result of possible malfeasance by city employees and officials and illegal activity by a select few private citizens. The public records obtained regarding this issue and this property were presented to Mr. Russo, the current city manager, at a meeting held last Friday, March 12th, 2021. A myriad of evidence and case history, inclusive of letters, violations, warnings, logs, pictures, emails and texts which were generated by city employees, were physically present and discussed. Mr. Russo expressed that the is, that this issue might better be investigated and reviewed by independent outside legal counsel. The items presented clearly depict a trail of illegal and unsafe activity dating back to 2017 regarding the property located at 18825 Atlantic Boulevard, Sunny Isles Beach. Unfortunately, these items presented also show how the owners of the property and their agents, without much effort, received cooperation and collusion from city employees. The abuse of power by all involved is glaring and overwhelming. I entered into a contract to purchase the property at 18825 Atlantic Boulevard, Sunny Isles Beach, in December of 2019. Two items were noted during the due diligence period prior to closing the purchase. The first was the City of Sunny Isles Beach communicated to Accurate Lean Search Corp. via a two-page letter dated December 19th, 2019, and signed by Helena Forbes, Code Compliance Manager, which noted a warning notice, a civil violation notice, a first notice of intent to lean, and a final notice of intent to lean regarding civil violation CDE of 2017, 623. This letter also noted that this violation had accumulated a total of $314,000 in fines as of December 12th, 2019. The second item exposed during the due diligence period was on the HU D settlement sheet issued the day of the closing, in which the owner noted three tenants occupying the property in a two-tenant maximum residence structure. Two facts that were clear, the city owed 313, I'm sorry, $314,000 in violation fees and that there was a tenant residing in the unpermitted structure and in the space that was not permitted or safe for habitation. The action of removing the violations without a reinspection or a thorough due diligence has placed the City of Sunny Isles in a very precarious position by willfully allowing the owner of the property to build, maintain and rent an unsafe structure. These violations were discovered and noted by city officials since 2017. The public records without a doubt depict the illegal construction occupancy of the structure that by December 2019 had accumulated over $300,000 in fines. The city itself and those inscrupulous employees involved in this sham transaction must know that the illegal garage conversion constitutes a violation of building and zoning codes. The investigation will clearly reveal that this structure was never inspected or permitted. The complicity of the city officials with the realtor of the property in their regard, in their disregard for providing the minimum public housing codes of fire, health, sanitary and structural rented unit, as per Florida Statute, Chapter 83, Landlord and Tenant Law, which enforce the landlord's responsibilities in the state of Florida, might transcend the boundaries.
Mauricio, it's, it's been well over three minutes, so what I think, what I think, Chris, Chris, I think you have to have code enforcement take a look. That's the bottom line.
Well, we had, um, um, she's got a problem, but it's not with us. Um, Legal and Stan have been, you know, they've gone over it. And I don't know, if you want, we can tell you now, or they've dealt with our end of it. I think we're, we're fine.
Okay.
There, there's some questionable things there, but it's, it's, it's within the private transaction than it is, um, with, with us.
Yeah, okay, and Ed's shaking his head, so I'm, the attorney's reviewed it. But I'm just saying, if there's anything, you know, if she's making any report of illegal, of improper activity or whatever, let's just make sure that we investigate it, so, because she's clearly frustrated, so, okay, thank you. Okay, um, Vice Mayor? You're kidding.
No, it's going to be fast, before, before you finish. I just want to urge anyone that's available and wants to discuss the safety issues in our city further. We're going to have a meeting next Tuesday at the Pelican Gym at 6 o'clock. That is a PTSA-sponsored meeting. And then an official workshop, uh, is going to be on Thursday in the, uh, open air parking area, the garage. That's a workshop and panel open to, to everyone. Both meetings are open to everyone. Anyone that's not getting information from the city, you can go on the website and sign up for alerts. You could sign up for very specific things that you want, so you don't get everything. Uh, and if you don't want to get emails, you can get it on social media. I know Susan and Kathy have been phenomenal about pushing information out as soon as they're able to confirm it. So I urge you to either do one or the other, uh, or email any one of us and, uh, I can get you that information. So again, next Thursday is the workshop and the panel with the state and the county, as well as others. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And the last thing I'll close with is, get vaccinated. It's going to be easier and easier to get vaccinated. COVID, it's still raging in South Florida. So don't get fooled into a sense of normalcy because we're, you know, because we're open. Uh, but get vaccinated, and the vaccines are getting easier and easier to, to, to get to. So thank you, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight and have a great rest of the month. Bye-bye.